Get my phone back into hand and to take a picture. It was engulfed in flames. And I knew that within moments it would start exploding and I would be dead. And just as I moved out of the range of the explosions, they started happening. And I prayed for the people behind me.
10-minute drive normally to Chico became almost four hours. So it was a long trip.
We started to hear a pattern. People kept telling us their story of how they escaped the campfire. And they talked about how if it wasn't for my neighbor who came and knocked on my door to tell me there was a fire, I don't know that I would have gotten out alive. If it wasn't for my son who lives next door picking me up and putting me in their car and driving me out of there, I don't know how I would have survived. And so I started really thinking about this connection between isolation and how connected you are to your community, to your neighbors, to your friends, to your family, and how that can be really helpful in a time of a disaster.
So we were actually the beneficiaries of someone making that plan in advance to have that group of people that they were going to call. And that she saved my life that day. So absolutely having that network really saved lives.
Find your five. The idea is that, you know, find trusted allies that can be there and can be responsive and will check in with you if a disaster were to happen.
So we recommend that you put people in your network that are down the street, that are maybe the next town over, that are outside the county and maybe even outside The final tier of the ready, set, go is that go piece. And it's simply that, it's go. Evacuation information comes in two types. The first type could be an evacuation warning. This is essentially information that we're going to push out to the public notifying them of a potential threat in their area where they may have to evacuate their home. An evacuation order is essentially that. We are telling people that it's time to go. There is an imminent threat to life and we do not believe that you have much time to leave the area. Code Red is an opt-in alerting system that will dial your number. It'll send you a phone call, a text message, and an email notifying you of an emergency. That message is sent from our office, the Office of Emergency Services. It's going to be very targeted to your area and it'll be specific to you.
At 5:13, the phone rang with the Code Red call. And so as I was going up 49, I could look over to the left and see the flames in the canyon.
The next layer is for staff to actually be out driving in the areas with a high-low There's no other reason you'll hear that in an area unless we're putting out that evacuation order. Not a warning, but an order.
My day started routine patrol, came in and I was notified by dispatch to respond out to the Jones Fire. Houses that had evacuation tags made it so we could just pass by. We knew that the residents had already been evacuated. Residences that did not have the tags, we would have to physically go in, knock on the door, look in the windows, make sure there were no occupants inside.
Once you've been evacuated, as you're leaving, put this tag somewhere very clearly identifiable, whether it's a mailbox, a gate, your address marker, so that deputies and officers can quickly identify if your residence has already been evacuated.
You look out my back window here on the east side and you see how close this fire came. It was certainly a shock. And at the same time, it was such an incredible relief to have the house as safe as it was.
I mean, I think with personal preparedness and being ready, it can feel overwhelming. It can feel like a lot to do. And the most important piece is to just start with one little bite at a time.
Just start the conversation. Have some sort of plan. It can be as small as a meetup place, you know, a destination that everybody will get to, everybody in the household will get to if there's a disaster.
Recognize you live in a community in a county that really does take the emergency response as a priority. We have worked diligently throughout the last few years on ensuring that not only our staff are trained and prepared, but we're also putting that out for our community. The more prepared you are in your own community, the better the outcome is going to be.
The level of community awareness, they have to be part of the solution. They have to communicate with their neighbors. They have to be part of the discussion in communities.
Welcome. We're going to call this meeting to order. We're going to be here for most of the day. We have a few breaks set up today and I have a lot of opening comments for you, but we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm going to ask Brian Foster, Director of Planning, to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for showing up today. This is going to be the best mine hearing ever. I realized this morning we've been talking about gold and gold mining and land use for 175 years, and we're going to continue that tradition today. I am really excited today. This is a culmination of work that's been transpiring since 2019. We're going to take our time today. We're going to have a presentation by our staff, presentation by the applicant. We're going to take plenty of time to listen to the public comment that we have. Again, we're going to continue the meeting until 7:00 PM tonight and make board deliberations tomorrow. I'm going to read a couple of statements here so that we make sure we're all clear on how things are going to go today. We want a civil and productive dialogue. We're not going to tolerate any outbursts. If you have signs, you want to hold those up, that's fine. Please don't obstruct anybody's view from the back. Make sure you don't poke them in the eye when you lift it up as well. Again, our intent is not to rush through this. This is a long process to get us to this point. We want to honor the applicant. We want to honor our community. We want to honor each and every viewpoint that is being brought here today. Many of you have taken time to send us written comments and come here and publicly commented to our board, to this elected body over the course of the last four years. We've heard you. Our staff has aggregated those comments before us. We have all that. So you're welcome to get up and we're here to listen to you again. This is a transparent and open process. Community participation has been the kind of the keystone of everything we've done. So we're here again to be a part of this community and work to reflect the views of our community and the needs of the applicant. This board is going to give you the utmost attention and care in this matter and listen carefully to all the viewpoints that are here today. So this is how it's going to go. We're going to have a staff presentation, then we're going to have an applicant presentation. The board is going to have clarifying questions likely from both the applicant and our staff. There may be questions directed to other participants in the room today. We're going to open it up for public comment. That public comment may be stopped at points for lunch, for certain breaks from the board or staff or the applicant should they need that. We're also going to take a break from 4:00 to 5:30 and then open it up again for comments from our community who couldn't be here during the daytime. We're going to go to summary, and that would be summary from our staff, summary from the applicant. Then we're going to have board discussion and deliberation, in which case the board can talk amongst themselves. We're not going to speed through that, but it will begin essentially speaking tomorrow at 9:00 AM. We'll then have to adopt a resolution and move forward from there. Few housekeeping items for us. At today's meeting, speaker number is required to address the board, and these numbers can be obtained from the clerk in the table located in the lobby. Once the public comment segment of the meeting begins, the clerk will call speakers up in groups of 10 to line up in the back of the chambers. If you're watching the meeting in a different viewing room, please come to the lobby when we announce that your number group is approaching so that you can line up in the chamber. When it is your turn to speak, please come up to the podium, state your name, and if you'd like, and provide your comments. Each speaker will be provided up to three minutes to comment. Once the three minutes is done, the microphone will automatically turn off. Any comments provided after the microphone is turned off will not be entered into the record. If you would like to hand in written comments, you may provide a copy of your written comments to the clerk of the board at the table, excuse me, written comments to the clerk of the board staff in the lobby at the table near where you picked up your speaker number. If you do provide written comment during the meeting, please remember that the board will not have a chance to review these comments before making our determination. During today's meeting, we'd like to ask that members of the public please refrain from clapping, talking over each other as we're broadcasting closed captioning to our additional meeting rooms and online, and the system will pick up these additional noises and make participation more challenging for our hearing impaired constituents. For those who have brought signs, we already talked about that. We talked about the breaks. Yep, and if you have any questions related to the conduct of this meeting, please see our staff in the lobby. We appreciate everyone's cooperation and look forward to today's civil dialogue and public hearing. I am now going to ask that if any board members have received any information from or met with anybody related to this project, including members of the public, the applicant, or anyone else, or if you've been on a site visit, address this at that time. So I'm going to start with Supervisor Hook and then work my way across if we have any disclosures to make.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, I just would like to disclose I have met very early on, I was out and had a tour of the mine and seen, I had another meeting later on just before we had the vested rights issue. And I've also met with numerous constituents and folks on the No Against the Mine.
In the past two years, I have met with the opposition to the project and also with the project, the applicants, and at the same time did a tour. In those instances, I had county council with me. Prior to probably in the 2019s, et cetera, I had met with opposition leaders and also those who are in favor of the applicant.
I'm going to go to Member Swarthout.
Thank you. I have, in the last year since I have been seated up here, I have met with the Concerned Citizens Roundtable, which is a group that's opposing the mine, also the Stop the Mine Task Force. I've had a meeting, a formal meeting with them. And I also met with Ralph Silberstein and the CEA group. In addition, I have met with the Mining Company after the Planning Commission, Mr. Mossman, your previous attorney, and one other person, I can't remember their name. And then millions of conversations in the grocery store with many of you in this room that I cannot recount all, but, you know, had several, you know, lots of in-person comments from people in the community.
So last year, early on, I met with CEA and several members of other groups who are in opposition to the mine. I indicated that I had an open door and was willing to meet with anyone, including Rice Gold, but they did not take me up on that offer, so I did not meet with them. In the last, since the vested rights hearing as part of my reelection campaign, I've had coffee with the candidate meetings, open meetings for anyone once a week downtown in the communal cafe, and I've had numerous constituents and other folks come and talk to me about the mine and other issues.
I as well have met with Mine Watch, CEA, the applicant opponents, and supporters of the mine both. I've taken a mine tour, met with Mr. Mossman several times in person, with county council, and I have as well made it publicly known that I would speak to anyone, both on the support or opposition side, about the mine and its ramifications for our community. With that, having stated these things, I think we're ready to open this public hearing. And I'm now going to turn it over to Brian Foster, Director of Planning, and Kyle.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Supervisor, Honorable Supervisors, and everybody else here today. Please give me a moment while we're pulling up the slides and I will, I will get started. So good morning. My name is Kyle Smith. I'm a senior planner in the Nevada County Planning Department and the project planner assigned to this project. To my left is Nick Bupponi. He is the Vice President at Rainy Planning and Management, who the county worked with to conduct the environmental review pursuant to SEQA and develop the EIR. I'll start my presentation by introducing the project and giving a breakdown of the project description. And then Nick will discuss the environmental analysis and the draft and final environmental impact reports. And then we will bring it back to me to discuss the project's consistency with the general plan and the Land Use and Development Code, and then finally the Planning Commission's recommendations from last spring. So the purpose of this hearing is to both present the project and the Planning Commission recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. And as Chair Bullock described upon the close of the public hearing, based on the information presented in public testimony, the Board of Supervisors would make a project recommendation, or a project determination, excuse me. So for a little bit of background, the application for subsurface mining was received in November of 2019 and was found to be a complete application in 2020. The county hired Rainy Planning and Management through our standard competitive bidding process to conduct environmental analysis pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act and guidelines, and Nick will go into more detail on this in a little bit. But the more than two-year process culminated in a final environmental impact report that was presented to the Planning Commission at their special hearing on May 10th and 11th in 2023 in order for them to make a recommendation to this board. As you are all aware, following the Planning Commission hearing, the land use application process was set aside momentarily while the county responded to the applicant's petition for vested rights, which was heard by this board in December. And as I just discussed, we are here to present this proposed project and the Planning Commission's recommendation from their May meeting. So the project sites are located in western Nevada County, essentially on two properties, around two surface properties. The Brunswick Industrial Site, sort of in the center of this map here, is zoned Light Industrial, or M1, with a site performance combining district applied, and the general plan designation is industrial. The Centennial Site in the kind of upper left of this area is similarly zoned Light Industrial with a general plan designation of industrial. I do want to note that Alternative 2, as requested by the applicant to be considered, would be eliminated under, or excuse me, the Centennial Site would be eliminated under Alternative 2. And as I'll go into in a little bit, those activities would be moved to the Brunswick Industrial Site. But overall, the two project areas are comprised of approximately 175 acres and would utilize approximately 1,425 acres of underground mining operations, at least 500 feet below the ground surface. So here's a closer image of the Brunswick Industrial Site, which generally consists of forested land with these disturbed areas related to former mining and sawmill operations on the site, including the 85-foot-tall concrete silo that's highlighted here. And you can also see that the south fork of Wolf Creek traverses the project site as annotated by the blue line feature here on this map. The Centennial Site similarly consists of forested land with disturbed areas related to historic mining and sawmill operations, including an existing building that's pointed out here near Whispering Pines Lane. The applicant has entered into a voluntary cleanup agreement with the California Department of Toxic Substances Control, or DTSC, for site remediation. This is a separate project, and although the project application includes the proposed use of the Centennial, the Centennial Site, under many of the alternatives, the applicant has requested that the board consider eliminating the Centennial Site from the project altogether by approving the proposed Alternative 2 as defined in the draft environmental impact report, which I will cover in a few minutes. This map shows the underground mineral rights boundaries and the proposed underground mining operations. The red hashed boundary here on this slide depicts the proposed underground operational areas, which, as I mentioned before, will occur at depth of at least 500 feet below the ground surface, and it generally underlays the area between Empire Mine State Park and the county airport. So generally, the proposed project would re-initiate underground mining operations and gold mineralization processing for the Idaho Maryland Mine over an 80-year permit period, with gold mineralization processing and underground exploration and mining proposed to operate 24 hours a day, seven days a week during full operations. Generally, the proposed project would include the following components. Starting the list here is de-watering the existing underground mine workings, which would take approximately six months, and then underground mining at a depth of 500 feet or more within those defined areas underlying the mineral rights properties for approximately 80 years. In addition to the de-watering, a new potable water pipeline would extend in Nevada Irrigation District, or NID, a potable water pipeline along an approximately 1 and 1/4 mile segment of East Bennett Road in order to provide potable water service to residential properties that are currently on wells that may be affected by the mine's de-watering activities. The above-ground facilities would be located within an approximately 29-acre industrial area on the Brunswick Industrial Site, and that would include a 165-foot-tall headframe building, a covered conveyor system in order to move material through the various processes, a processing plant to grind rock and then recover gold minerals, and an 80-foot headframe for the support shaft, as well as other pertinent structures, including warehouses and office space. Overall, more than 125,000 square feet of above-ground facilities would be developed, including an above-ground water treatment plant, which would also be built on the Brunswick Industrial Site in order to treat the groundwater associated with initial and then ongoing de-watering of the underground mine workings. The engineered fill that, excuse me, the engineered fill that's generated by the proposed mining activities would be placed on both sites in order to eventually create level pads for future development industrial uses. However, as I mentioned, under Alternative 2, only the Brunswick Site, shown here, would be utilized for that engineered fill placement to create the level pads. And then following completion of mining and processing activities, the project sites would be reclaimed to open space and then land suitable for future development of industrial uses pursuant to the reclamation plan and the Land Use and Development Code. Future development on these project sites and those industrial pads would be subject to additional environmental review and permitting at a later date. So as I mentioned earlier, the representative for the project applicant respectfully requested to move forward with Alternative 2, which was identified in the EIR as the preferred alternative to the proposed project. Alternative 2 proposes to eliminate the Centennial Site and any related impacts from the proposed project and expand the fill pile at the Brunswick Industrial Site with the fill that would have gone to the Centennial Site. This would eliminate the truck trips between Brunswick and Centennial Site moving that fill material, but it would increase the duration of the engineered pad construction at the Brunswick Site. Alternative 2 would still allow for industrial uses to be developed at the Brunswick Industrial Site, and the additional fill would eventually increase the final pad height by approximately 50 feet. Here is some images of the proposed fill pile under Alternative 2 as it relates to the other aspects of the project. Multiple land use entitlements would be required as part of the proposed project and Alternative 2. So the applicant, the, excuse me, the applicant has submitted a rezone application to rezone the parcels located on the Brunswick Industrial Site from the Light Industrial with Site Performance Combining District to Light Industrial with a mineral extraction combining district. So removing the site performance and replacing it with the mineral extraction combining district to both provide public awareness for the potential for mining to occur and to allow for the subsurface, or for the surface mining facilities related to the proposed underground mining operations as required by the Land Use and Development Code. The property was originally zoned M1 with the SP combining district at a previous property owner's request in order to allow for the development of an industrial park, which was never developed. The current property owner has submitted this application for rezone to both allow for the proposed mining project because the code requires the ME rezone to apply to mining applications in order to provide for the public awareness and information related to those operations. The project also includes a variance application to the 45-foot maximum building height limits in the industrial zoning district to allow for the construction of headframes at 80 and 165 feet, as well as hoist buildings and a processing plant. Although the applicant has stated that a variance should not be required for the proposed headframes that exceed those base district height limits, the planning department does consider the variance to be the appropriate permit pathway because exceptions to those base limit, those base limit height districts are limited only to those architectural, alternative energy, and other supportive infrastructure features defined in the Land Use and Development Code. While the headframes would be uninhabited structures, they do exceed the base district height limits and do not comply with the exception of the height standards permit pathway that is defined in the code. And so, as I mentioned, the planning department does consider the variance to be the appropriate pathway to allow the proposed development. The applicant has also applied for a use permit for surface and subsurface uses and facilities over the 80-year permit life, as well as a reclamation plan and financial assurance cost estimate as required by the Land Use and Development Code. Those would be required to reclaim all of the project-related surface disturbance to a condition, to a condition that is then suitable for development of industrial uses and uses of open space as allowed by the Land Use and Development Code when the project is complete. There are also a number of management plans that would be, or that are required pursuant to the Land Use and Development Code and are included in the project application, as well as in the environmental impact report as appendices. And these would need to be approved in conjunction with approval of the, of the proposed project in order to, excuse me, in order to allow for disturbances to a number of sensitive environmental resources, including watercourses, special status species, the pine hill flannel bush, steep slope areas or areas of high erosion potential, a fault zone, and a flood plain. Should Alternative 2 be approved, however, not all of these management, management plans would be required because some of those environmental resources only exist on the Brunswick Site. For example, the special status species, the pine hill flannel bush. In addition to the management plans, an amendment to the final map that created the parcels on the Brunswick Site would be required in order to remove a note from that final map, which requires a 200-foot building setback from a fault line. The geotechnical support and analysis for removing that setback is included in the EIR. EIR and the geology soils and mineral resources section. A boundary line adjustment would also be required in order to shift some parcel lines around in order to ensure that the proposed buildings don't encroach into setbacks or crossover property lines at the Brunswick Industrial Site. And then, finally, as part of the proposed project, the applicant proposes to enter into a development agreement with the county in order to establish a framework both for phasing development as well as for funding the roadway maintenance costs that would be associated with the operation. So in addition to the land use entitlements, the project is subject to environmental review pursuant to SEQA, and I will hand it over to Nick to discuss that portion.
Morning, Chair, members of the board. It's honored to be here. My name is Nick Papani, Vice President with Rainey Planning and Management. I give an overview of the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, process for the proposed project, and just start off with a couple things, a few of which were already mentioned, but just want to emphasize that my firm, Rainey Planning and Management, was hired through a competitive process that the county ran. We were selected and have been under contract with Nevada County to prepare the environmental impact report. We hired a team of technical experts that supplemented our SEQA expertise, and that team of technical experts provided independent third-party peer reviews of all applicant-provided reports, and in many cases resulted in certain revisions to those reports to ensure their adequacy for the environmental review, and those formed the basis of many of the technical sections in the environmental impact report. So with that, I just want to cover a couple things here in terms of the process. We prepared, kind of at the outset of the SEQA process, the first step is when a lead agency decides to prepare an environmental impact report, that they have to release what's called the Notice of Preparation, indicating to state agencies, local agencies, and interested members of the public that the agency, Nevada County, intends to prepare an EIR. And the purpose of that scoping meeting is to solicit comments on the range of issues that should be studied in the EIR. That NOP, or Notice of Preparation, was released in July of 2020, and a scoping meeting was held during the 30-day review. That NOP goes out for 30 days and allows folks to provide comments on what issues they think should be studied in the EIR. And so during that 30-day period, we had a scoping meeting where we provided an opportunity for folks to submit verbal comments, and subsequent to that scoping meeting, we entered the process of preparing the environmental impact report and all of the technical information and the peer reviews and so forth, and that resulted in a draft environmental impact And that was released on January 4, 2022, so it took approximately over a year and a half to prepare that, and that was released for a 60-day review period. According to the SEQA guidelines, the public review period for a draft EIR shall be a minimum of 45 days and no longer than 60 days, except in unusual circumstances. In this particular case, based on the public comments received, based on some of the winter storm events that were had where the republic, or excuse me, power outages, the county did decide to extend that 60-day review period to a total of 91 days. So with that, we'll talk a little bit about the content in the draft EIR. I'm going to keep it at a pretty high level. Obviously, we can go into any questions you may have as we proceed through the process here, but the draft EIR analysis identified several potentially significant impacts that the project would have on the physical environment. Those are listed here very generally. These are the ones for which actually the draft EIR identifies mitigation measures that could feasibly reduce the project's impacts to a less insignificant level. SEQA operates off of thresholds, so if their threshold is exceeded, it could be air quality, for example, you have to hit a certain number of pounds per day for a particular emission, and if you're above that, it's a significant impact, so we try to get that back below that threshold, and then if we can do that, that's a less insignificant impact. So essentially, there's different thresholds for the different topics, and for those listed here, we were able to identify mitigation measures to modify the project, you know, require specific requirements, and therefore, those impacts were able to come below those identified thresholds. So you see the topics here, and again, we can go into detail on any in particular, but let's go to the next slide. These are the impacts for which feasible mitigation could not reduce the impacts below the identified threshold, and so those impacts remain significant and unavoidable. Those include aesthetics, so that is the substantial degradation of the visual character quality of the site or area, and that's due to the engineered fill pads that would be constructed at both Brunswick and Centennial, or in the case of Alternative 2, just Brunswick. Due to those fill pad heights, there's only limited things that could be required to try and soften that impact, and so that impact remains significant and unavoidable. For noise, there was one significant and unavoidable noise impact. It would be a temporary noise impact related to the construction of the potable water pipeline along East Bennett Road, and that basically, there's certain mitigation measures that can be implemented to reduce noise levels, but not below the identified threshold included in the analysis. But that would only last, of course, so long as the construction is occurring for that water pipeline. And then transportation, there were a few intersections that would be impacted and could not be fully mitigated, really the reason being that the intersections are not fully within Nevada County's jurisdiction. So when that's the case, the county can't require another agency to implement measures. There are feasible physical improvements that could be made to those intersections to address the impacts, but because Nevada County can't compel another agency, that's typically the way we handle that, is we render it significant and unavoidable. But if those improvements were implemented, those impacts could be addressed. The draft environmental impact reporting includes an analysis of project alternatives, as is required under SEQA. Alternative, by definition of...
Can you move that, make sure you move that mic closer to you? We're having trouble hearing you in the back.
Okay.
Thank you.
The SEQA requires an analysis of alternatives, and alternatives have to meet most of the basic objectives of the project and also avoid or substantially lessen a project's significant impact. So with that kind of lens, in terms of what an alternative needs to accomplish under SEQA, we looked at a total of nine alternatives. We fully evaluated four alternatives and dismissed five potential alternatives from detailed consideration because they either didn't meet most of the project objectives or they did not avoid or substantially lessen the project's significant impacts. So the alternatives that were evaluated in the draft EIR included the no project, no build, so pretty straightforward, essentially, the sites remain the same. The second alternative, as has already been discussed a bit, is the elimination of the Centennial Industrial Site and the expansion of the Brunswick Fill Pile. And the third alternative is the expansion of the Centennial Engineered Fill Pile and the elimination of the Brunswick Engineered Fill Pile. The fourth alternative is the reduced throughput alternative, and for that specific alternative, there would be a processing of 500 tons per day of mineralized ore rather than 1,000 tons per day, which is the proposal under the project, so essentially a 50% reduction in extraction and processing. So that would extend the life of the mine to fully utilize the resource that's subsurface. So instead of 80 years, the estimate is 130 to 160 years. Fill operations at Centennial and Brunswick would also lengthen, and the analysis also looks at what we call the environmentally superior alternative, that is, the alternative that reduces the most impacts of the project compared to the other alternatives considered and still meets most of the project objectives, and that was identified as Alternative 2. A couple notes on that. The Alternative 2 would avoid the significant and unavoidable aesthetic or visual impact at the Centennial Site. It would avoid the significant, but there are mitigable, impacts on the Centennial Site to Pine Hill Flannel Bush, which is a protected special status plant species. It would preclude the need for hauling engineered fill to Centennial Site, so that would avoid the potential noise impact from jake break noise. And it would also eliminate pavement impacts to a couple segments of roadways that were identified due to truck haul traffic, and those pavement impacts would be along Brunswick, northbound, between East Bennett Road and Whispering Pines, and a short segment of East Bennett between one of the project driveways and Brunswick Road. There's also some widening along the Centennial Site driveway that would be required to allow truck turn movements, and so that widening would not be required. And so those are just kind of capturing some of those avoided impacts, if you will, with implementation of Alternative 2 as the environmentally superior alternative. Okay, public comments. So during the 91-day public review period, the county received 12 comments from agencies, comment letters, 32 letters from groups, and approximately 2,800 individual comment letters, as well as, of course, comments at the draft EIR comment hearing. All comments were addressed in what we call the final EIR. The final EIR includes 38 master responses, which is a common way to approach thematic comments, comments that occur often, and concerns expressed repeatedly, so we have 38 master responses, followed by responses to all individual comments that were provided. There's several revisions that were implemented to the draft EIR as a result of public comment, clarifying existing mitigation measures, providing additional background, some additional analysis, but no identification of new significant impacts that were not already identified, and so we look closely at the criteria for recirculation of an EIR. Those criteria are in the Guidelines 15088.5, and we determine that recirculation was not required, and the final EIR was released on December 16, 2022. Last component here I'm going to present is just the requirement through the SEQA process to prepare findings of fact, and for projects that would have significant and unavoidable impacts, a statement of overriding considerations. So pursuant to the requisite public resource code, we provided findings of fact that identified each significant impact and ways that those impacts would be mitigated, and for those that can't be mitigated, which we briefly covered, a statement of overriding considerations was provided, which identifies some potential project benefits that could be considered to outweigh the project's unavoidable effects. Again, a requirement under SEQA, and that's part of the packet, and with that, I think I'll turn it back to you.
Yeah, thank you, Nick. And now I'll take it back and talk about the project's consistency with the general plan, and as I mentioned, wrap up with a discussion of the planning commission's recommendation. So the general plan explains the goals and policies of the land use element to, quote, "establish a desired land use pattern which balances growth between rural and urban areas. Providing a balance between housing, employment, natural resources, and services is a key element in maintaining the quality of life and unique character of Nevada County," end quote. As I mentioned, both project sites are designated as industrial by the Nevada County General Plan, and while the Centennial Site and most of the Brunswick Site are located within the Grass Valley community region, the southern portion of the Brunswick Industrial Site and the location of the proposed engineered fill pile is within the rural region of the county. As proposed, the mining operation would occur 24 hours a day, seven days a week. It is estimated that a daily maximum of 236 one-way truck trips and an average of 115 one-way truck trips would occur over the course of 80 years. This level of mining and processing activity could be considered inconsistent with the rural character and quality of life of the surrounding area. Pursuant to the Land Use and Development Code, the purpose of the industrial district is to provide for the areas for the production, repairing, distribution, and warehousing of goods and equipment, along with supporting businesses and services. In addition, uses should provide for buffering from adjacent land uses in order to minimize incompatibility, and should have convenient, controlled access to arterial or major collector roads without passing through residential areas. While the above-ground facilities for the proposed project do include adequate setbacks from adjacent land uses and include screening and landscaping as required by the Land Use and Development Code, the intensity of the mining operations exceed those that are compatible with the rural character of the surrounding semi-rural area. The general plan identifies all lands in the county as either a rural region or as a community region. General Plan Policy 1.1.1 requires that a distinct boundary be maintained between rural and community regions, that coordination occur with the city of Grass Valley in this case, and that zoning consistency be achieved when amending the zoning district, in this case, the Brunswick Industrial Site rezoning from M1 with a Site Performance Combining District to M1 with an ME, Mineral Extraction Combining District. The primary issue is the boundary between the regions at the Brunswick Industrial Site. Two parcels that form part of the site exist within the rural region, whereas the site's four remaining parcels exist in the community region. As proposed, the project would be located within both the rural and community regions with proposed land uses and activities interrupting the distinct boundary between the rural and community regions outlined in the general plan, as therefore not considered consistent with General Plan Policy 1.1.1. General Plan Policy 1.1.2 defines the intended growth patterns in the rural and community regions. Specifically, within the rural regions, growth is limited to those types and densities of development which are consistent with the open rural lifestyle, pastoral character, and natural setting and surrounding land use patterns that exist in the area. The Brunswick Site is surrounded by estate and single-family residential land use designations. The estate and residential designations are intended for low-density residential development at a minimum lot size of three or one and a half acres, depending on the area, per dwelling unit. So these areas are essentially rural in character but are adjacent to community boundaries or nearby the community regions in order to be more accessible to shopping, employment, and other services that the community regions offer. Meanwhile, the single-family designation is intended for more dense, single-family residential development at densities of up to four dwelling units per acre. The intensity of the proposed project with 312 employees slated to work at the mine, which would be operating 24 hours a day, seven days a week, would not be consistent with the open rural lifestyle, pastoral character, and natural setting that is defined in the general plan for the general plan for the surrounding residential areas. So as a result, the project would also not be considered consistent with General Plan Policy 1.1.2. General Plan Policy 1.3.2 defines the types and intensity of land uses that are consistent within the rural regions of the county. Land uses in rural regions should provide for buffering from adjacent land uses in order to minimize any incompatibility, and the land uses should support lower levels of service through low density and intensity of use. As discussed, the mining operations would occur 24 hours a day, and it is estimated that the daily maximum of 236 one-way truck trips and an average of 115 one-way truck trips would occur over 80 years, and the intensity of the proposed mining and processing activity could be considered inconsistent with the rural character and quality of life of the surrounding rural region. Although the more than 125,000 square feet of proposed above-ground facilities would include the required setbacks from adjacent land uses, screening, landscaping, lighting controls, and other design protections outlined in the Land Use and Development Code, the intensity of the mining operations can be considered incompatible with the rural character of the surrounding area and inconsistent with that open pastoral character of rural regions, and would therefore be inconsistent with this general plan policy defining the types and intensity of land uses in rural regions. General Plan Policy 1.4.2 helps define the nature and types of development in the community regions of the county. So the proposed structures on the Brunswick Industrial Site would mostly be located within the community regions and have been conceptually designed to generally comply with the standards set forth in the Western Nevada County Design Guidelines. For example, the campus would be composed, or would be comprised of buildings of various scales and enassing. The parking lot and buildings would be separated by landscaping upon entering the complex. The office would be the first building one approaches from the parking lot. And heavier uses, loading bays, those sorts of activities would face the interior of the campus. The warehouse and office buildings are the most prominent when entering the campus, and each structure does include architectural features and design components that are intended to reduce the buildings to human scale. The landscaping trees that are required by the Land Use and Development Code would be planted at strategic locations to partially screen project applicant, or, excuse me, project elements when the trees reach maturity. However, those proposed structures and the engineered fill pads are of substantial in height, and the vegetation screening would not be sufficient to prevent a substantial degradation in visual character or quality of the sites, as Nick mentioned. The proposed building heights to a maximum of 165 feet for the headframe building and 80 feet for the support headframe building, where 45 feet is the maximum allowed, as well as the intensity of the mining and industrial use, as discussed, would both be inconsistent with the rural character of the surrounding area and the community region. Finally, Policy 17.6 of the mineral management element of the land use, or of the general plan, excuse me, the previous general plan policies are located in the land use element. But Policy 17.6 of the mineral management element defines compatible areas for mineral extraction throughout Nevada County. The project as proposed and conditioned would be a gold mining operation located on a site zoned for industrial use, which could be considered consistent with the policy. As discussed previously, the mining operations would occur 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and it is estimated that the daily maximum of 236 one-way truck trips and an average of 115 one-way truck trips would occur over the course of the 80-year operation. This level of mining and processing activity could be considered inconsistent with the rural character and quality of life of the surrounding area. While the above-ground facilities do include those setbacks and other development controls required in the Land Use and Development Code, the intensity of the mining operations and the land use exceed those that are compatible with the rural character of the surrounding area, which has transitioned to a semi-rural environment since the original operation concluded. Therefore, the project as proposed and conditioned is not consistent with General Plan Policy 17.6 of the mineral management element. The findings required to approve a rezone are defined in the Land Use and Development Code, Section 5.9G, and as proposed, the project would require that rezone from M1 SP to M1 ME, as I've discussed. As outlined in Section 2.5 of the Land Use and Development Code, the industrial district provides for areas, or provides for the production, repairing, distribution, and warehousing of goods and equipment, along with supporting businesses and services. The uses should provide for buffering from adjacent land uses in order to minimize compatibility, and should have that convenient and controlled access to major collector roads without passing through residential areas. As discussed, neither the proposed project nor Alternative Two were found to be consistent with the goals and policies that encourage development to be compatible with the existing character of the neighborhoods and communities where the development is being proposed, while maintaining the rural quality of life and land use compatibility. As a result, staff believes that the required findings for the rezone pursuant to the Land Use and Development Code cannot be made because the proposed project is inconsistent with multiple Nevada County general plan policies. The second finding, as required by the Nevada County Land Use and Development Code, is to determine that the proposed rezone would not be detrimental to the public interest, health, safety, convenience, or welfare of the county. Over the course of the project, the county has received more than 5,000, excuse me, individual comments and a significant number of comments and concerns regarding the incompatibility of the proposed use with neighboring residential and commercial properties, and how the use would detrimentally impact the public interest, health, safety, convenience, or welfare. In addition, as Nick discussed, there is extensive evidence in the EIR concerning noise, traffic, aesthetic, air quality pollution, and other impacts to surrounding property owners and the buffer zone with adjacent parcels, along with impacts to the residents of the city of Grass Valley. Therefore, based on the findings required to be made for a rezone, or in order to rezone the Brunswick Industrial Site at the ME combining district, the find, based on the findings, the rezone would not be consistent with the light industrial zoning district, given the overall intensity of the proposed mining project and its inconsistency with general The findings required to approve a variance are defined in California state law and also in the Nevada County Land Use and Development Code and are similarly shown here. Pursuant to Land Use and Development Code, the purpose of the variance is to provide for a procedure in order to allow for variation from the strict application or of a provision of the zoning code, where specifically where special circumstances pertaining to the physical character of the site are such that the literal enforcement of the requirements deprives the property privileges enjoyed by other property in the vicinity and under identical zoning classifications. In order to approve a variance, specific findings are required as set forth in the government code. The applicant asserts that the mineral rights of the project sites are unique and are of quality, quantity, accessibility, and in close proximity to processing facilities to allow for a feasible mining operation, and the surrounding properties with the same zoning district would need to use the same general height of a headframe and other facilities that are taller than the 45-foot maximum height limit that is described in the industrial zoning district. The application, however, has failed to demonstrate that there are special circumstances applicable to the subject property, including size, shape, topography, location, or surroundings, which would require structures that did not achieve development standards. As a result, the required findings to approve the proposed site, excuse me, the required findings to approve the proposed height exception to the 45-foot height limitations cannot be made. This information was presented to the Nevada County Planning Commission at their special meeting on May 10th and 11th in 2023. In addition to all of the project and permitting documentation, more than 100 oral comments were made at the hearing, and approximately 900 pages of written comments were received at that hearing. And then after deliberating on the project, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend that the Board of Supervisors take action to deny the proposed project. Specifically, the Planning Commission recommendation includes not certifying the EIR, denying the rezone and variance, and then taking no action on the remaining entitlements because the proposed action is inconsistent with several of the general plan goals and policies. The intensity of the operations also exceed those that are compatible with the rural character of the surrounding semi-rural area, and that the applicant has not demonstrated that there are special circumstances applicable to the subject property, including size, shape, topography, location, or surroundings, as required by California Government Code. As a result, the Planning Commission recommendation includes an action to not certify the EIR as adequate, and instead find the project denial statutorily exempt from SEQA because the SEQA guidelines dictate that SEQA does not apply to project where a public agency denies or disallows the project. In addition, the Planning Commission recommendation includes project actions to deny the rezone and the variance entitlements, and then take no action on the remaining entitlements because they would not be able to allow that use without the rezone and variance. With that, the recommended project actions are here on screen, and I would be happy to respond to questions or pass it off to other members of my team to respond to questions. Thank you, Kyle. Thank you, Nick. I think considering it's close to 10:00 AM, we're going to take a short recess from 10:00 to 10:15. We'll reconvene at 10:15, and then we can open it up for questions.
Ready Nevada County is an education campaign designed to help the public have successful outcomes during emergency events. We really focus on a whole host of disasters or emergency events. We want to have a broad spectrum. We want to be prepared for anything, but really, we focus a lot on wildfire because we know that's one of the most likely events to happen in Nevada County.
Ready, Set, Go is really built around the wildfire premise, to prepare residents to be ready before an event, to move into the set posture when there's a red flag or a fire is near you, and then to go when it's time to go.
Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a three-tiered community emergency preparedness plan.
I have lived in this house, which we built, my husband and I, 26 years ago now, actually. We selected the hardy plank, the concrete siding, and also the metal roof. Then when we moved up here and heard about the 49er fire, that's when we started to say, wow, this really is even more important than we first realized.
So the 49er fire is one of the most historic fires in Nevada County's history. They figured it changed the laws of the state of California that said, this is how you have to protect your home. That came out of Nevada County.
Steve Eubanks came from the Fire Safe Council, and the main thing we needed to pay attention to was the ladder fuels. Planting has been removed from the edges of the house so that it does not touch the house. It was an incredible service from the Fire Safe Council to come out and spend a couple of hours going through this property.
So the ready phase is when there's no immediate threat to you and your family. This is the time where you should be doing education and planning, whether that be training, educating yourself, or accumulating equipment, hardening your home, creating defensible space.
Defensible space is really all about creating a buffer zone between your house and flammable vegetation. We really focus on defensible space around the home, that first 100 feet, but also around the roadway, too. Another aspect of the ready phase is hardening the home, and really what that means is making your home more resilient to wildfire.
That's going to be putting the fine-grained mesh around the vents of your home so that embers won't get into under your house or into the eaves of your house. That's going to be using non-combustible materials on your deck and around your home, so when an ember storm comes through, it's not going to ignite your home itself.
I currently live here in Grass Valley with my parents. All of us have sleep apnea, so we all have CPAP machines that require power in order to run.
I also use a nebulizer, and that's used to disperse medication that I need to give myself breathing again. When we have safety shut-offs, we have to hook up our equipment to batteries that have inverters.
We have a generator that powers some of the things around the house, but then I obtained a pretty substantial battery from Freed, and it was so easy to go through the process to obtain a battery that I would recommend it to anyone who might have medical needs that require power, or really anything. I would highly recommend contacting Freed.
So whether it's a snowstorm or a public safety power shut-off, we really want folks to be thinking about, okay, what are the things I'll need on hand to weather the storm? Do I need to have candles? Do I need to have battery-powered radio? Do I need to have flashlights? So what are the things that you'll need to shelter in place or address the disaster at hand?
So a go-bag could be anything. It could be a backpack. It could be a suitcase. It's going to be something that you put together to sustain yourself, your family, your pets, if needed, that's going to have food, water, medication, clothing, toiletries to get you by for 72 hours. You need to think of your go-bag as the only resource you may have. Stores may be closed, the power may be out, so you may have to literally live out of this thing for a three-day period as an evacuating.
If you are someone with a disability, maybe you have a chronic health condition. For me, I have type 1 diabetes. I have an insulin pump, right? And so that's a critical piece that I need to plan for if I'm going to ever evacuate or be away from my house, frankly, for any amount of time, right? What we find often is that if people don't evacuate with their CPAP machine, with their oxygen concentrator, with their wheelchair, walker, then it can be difficult on the other end.
My name's Ulysses Palencia. I work in the 211 Call Center. I'm just a resident of Grass Valley. I have two daughters, a four-year-old and a one-year-old. In Nevada County, 211 is available 24/7. So what we provide for the community is information. That can be anything from directions to the resource centers. It can be letting them know where the fire is, you know, if they are themselves in an evacuation center, if it's a fire, if there's any information as to whether their power's coming back on during a PSPS. 211 gets the information that we provide directly from the county, so directly from the Office of Emergency Services. The whole team cares. We're all local community members.
So we were all sleeping in bed on Thursday, November 8th, in paradise, and first the house phone rang. Picked up my phone, it was my sister who lived a block or so away from us.
We were woken by a telephone call from my daughter. She said that we were being evacuated.
I left sooner than that. I left sooner than them. I had everything ready. They were on the way out the door.
There was not time to think about what you're going to take, what you're not going to take.
The night before the fire, I knew it was a red flag warning, and I knew that it was a high risk, so on my way home, I filled up the tank.
On our way out, we didn't get too far from the house, and we're watching a fire coming down the hill.
There was a machine shop right to my right, right there, and it had gas tanks and propane tanks. And I saw a lone ember kind of floating through, dancing through the air, and I watched it as it landed on the machine shop. In the time it took me to get my phone back into hand and to take a picture, it was engulfed in flames. And I knew that within moments, it would start exploding, and I would be dead. And just as I moved out of the range of the explosions, they started happening, and I prayed for the people behind me.
A 10-minute drive normally to Chico became almost four hours, so it was a long trip.
We started to hear a pattern. People kept telling us their story of how they escaped the campfire, and they talked about how if it wasn't for my neighbor who came and knocked on my door to tell me there was a fire, I don't know that I would have gotten out alive. If it wasn't for my son, who lives next door, picking me up and putting me in their car and driving me out of there, I don't know how I would have survived. And so, I started really thinking about this connection between isolation and how connected you are to your community, to your neighbors, to your friends, to your family, and how that can be really helpful in a time of a disaster.
So, we were actually the beneficiaries of someone making that plan in advance, to have that group of people that they were going to call. And that, she saved my life that day, so absolutely, having that network really saved lives.
Find your five. The idea is that, you know, find trusted allies that can be there and can be responsive and will check in with you if a disaster were to happen.
So, we recommend that you put people in your network that are down the street, that are maybe the next town over, that are outside the county, and maybe even outside the state.
The final tier of the Ready, Set, Go is that go piece, and it's simply that, it's go. Evacuation information comes in two types. The first type could be an evacuation warning. This is essentially information that we're going to push out to the public, notifying them of a potential threat in their area where they may have to evacuate their home. An evacuation order is essentially that. We are telling people that it's time to go. There is an imminent threat to life, and we do not believe that you have much time to leave the area.
Code Red is an opt-in alerting system that will dial your number. It'll send you a phone call, a text message, and an email notifying you of an emergency. That message is sent from our office, the Office of Emergency Services. It's going to be very targeted to your area, and it'll be specific to you.
At 5:13, the phone rang with the Code Red call, and so, as I was going up 49, I could look over to the left and see the flames in the canyon.
The next layer is for staff to actually be out driving in the areas with a high-low siren. There's no other reason you'll hear that in an area unless we're putting out that evacuation order, not a warning, but an order.
My day started routine patrol, came in, and I was notified by dispatch to respond out to the Jones fire. Houses that had evacuation tags made it so we could just pass by. We knew that the residents had already been evacuated. Residents that did not have the tags, we would have to physically go in, knock on the door, look in the windows, make sure there were no occupants inside.
Once you've been evacuated, as you're leaving, put this tag somewhere very, you know, clearly identifiable, whether it's a mailbox, a gate, your address marker, so that deputies and officers can quickly identify if your residence has already been evacuated.
You look out my back window here on the east side, and you see how close this fire came. It was certainly a shock, and at the same time, it was such an incredible relief to have the house as safe as it was.
I mean, I think with personal preparedness and being ready, it can feel overwhelming. It can feel like a lot to do, and the most important piece is to just start with one little bite at a time.
Just start the conversation. Have some sort of plan. It can be as small as a meetup place, you know, a destination that everybody will get to, everybody in the household will get to if there's a disaster.
Recognize you live in a community, in a county, that really does take the emergency response as a priority. We have worked diligently throughout the last few years on ensuring that not only our staff are trained and prepared, but we're also putting that out for our community. The more prepared you are in your own community, the better the outcome is going to be.
The level of community awareness, they have to be part of the solution. They have to communicate with their neighbors. They have to be part of the discussion in communities. They have to support the response, the prevention, the education, and ultimately, the collaboration and the engagement. People have to be engaged at all levels.
The more you think about it now, the easier it will be when the time comes that you need to evacuate.
We've created this network, and we want you to make sure that you know that you can tap into that. So, if you are feeling a little bit overwhelmed, not sure where to start, reach out to one of our offices, reach out to the Fire Safe Council or 2-1-1. We're here to support you.
Nevada County has a new tool to make evacuations safer and more efficient in the event of an emergency. This new tool is called Zone Haven, and we need you to know your zone. In order to know your zone, you need to go to community.zonehaven.com, type in your address. Once your address populates in the pop-up window, take that information and write down the zone that is given to you where you know you'll find it in case of emergency.
Zone Haven and Knowing Your Zone does not replace NICSOL and/or Code Red. It actually supplements them, and it makes those tools more powerful because you'll know what zones are being evacuated or which ones are being placed on advisory, and as a result, you won't have to do anything else other than listen to those messages and know if it's time to go.
Even if you don't have internet, this could be done by word of mouth. It can be done by radio, or it could be us driving down the street, so please know your zone.
I have a few questions for you, but first, I think the applicant has a brief request of the board.
Yeah, I just want to note that we submitted a letter similar to the last hearing where we requested respectfully that Supervisor Hall recuse herself from this hearing for the reasons stated in that letter. So, I just want to put that on the record, that that request still stands. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Has that been entered into the record?
Yes, that has been entered in the record.
Okay, thanks. And I'll let Supervisor Hall respond.
Thank you. Yes, I will respectfully decline, but I will read a statement into the record for the purposes. My name is Heidi Hall. I'm District One Supervisor in Nevada County. Petitioner in this case, Rise Gold, has requested my recusal from these conditional use permit proceedings based on an alleged unacceptable probability of bias towards a number of ideas with regard to mining, the petitioner themselves, and more. The allegation is based upon statements I made on an issue involving a different company for a different project as a private citizen with limited information nearly 15 years ago. Petitioner does not provide any concrete evidence of actual bias based on these statements. In addition, I have no personal or financial interest in this project or the petitioner. In my current position as supervisor, I represent the constituents of District One specifically and the county as a whole more broadly with full access to facts and evidence. I respectfully reject the request for recusal. I will serve on this board in this matter as I have been elected to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Hall. With that, I'll open it up, start with questions from Members Swarthout first for our staff.
Thanks. I actually don't have any questions at this time. Thank you.
Supervisor Hall.
No questions at this time, thanks.
Okay. Supervisor Schofield.
Supervisor Hook.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. I have a few. I'll make them really brief. They're pretty broad. Kyle, can you just briefly describe the significant difference between potential significant impacts and unavoidable impacts for us?
I think I will actually kick this over to Nick from Rainey Planning and Management to discuss.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Nick Papponi again. So, the potentially significant impacts are those impacts that we identified would exceed identified thresholds of significance in the draft EIR. We identified that those impacts could be fully mitigated through imposition of feasible mitigation measures below those thresholds, and so, the resultant level of significance is less than significant. So, you can kind of think of it as less than significant with mitigation. The significant and unavoidable impacts are those that while we could identify some mitigation, it wouldn't bring the impacts fully below the identified thresholds. So, the resultant level of significance is unavoidable. There's no full set of mitigation to fully reduce the impact below the thresholds. Is that helpful?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, just to make sure I was understanding my follow-up question. Is the environmentally superior alternative the final bullet on that one slide? It still contains potentially significant. Which ones exactly? Could you point that out?
Yeah, so essentially, with, maybe one way to look at it would be, I mentioned several impacts that would be avoided through that, and I can go over those again, but aside from that, all the other project impacts would remain.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
So, if you'd like me to recap on those.
No, I wrote them down.
Okay.
Separating them. No other questions for me? Any questions? Nope? Okay. Thank you. And with that, we'll turn it over to the applicant presentation.
Okay, good morning, Supervisors, Chairman. My name is Chris Powell. I'm an attorney at Hanson Bridget LLP in Sacramento, California. I'm here representing my client, Rise Grass Valley, Inc., in support of their CUP and other entitlement application. All right, we got the presentation here. Oh, yeah. And so, I'm going to pass the mic over to Joe Mullins, the CEO of Rise Grass Valley, for some brief comments.
Is this on? Yes. I want to thank Chair Bullock, Supervisor Swarthout, Supervisor Hall, Supervisor Schofield, Supervisor Hook, Allison Lehman, the CEO, Kit Elliott, Matt Kelly, Kyle Smith, the staff from Rainey, the members of the public that are here to allow us to be here at this hearing. It's been a long process for us as a company. I know it's been a long process for you and all the people in the room, and I want to thank you for giving us this day in front of you today. I'm the CEO of Rise Gold and have been the CEO since September, and I've been working on the Idaho, Maryland mine project, which is before you here. This mine produced gold, silver, and tungsten from 1863 to 1956, and the Nevada County General Plan calls for the county to, quote, "encourage the mining of previously mined land if such land still contains economically mineable minerals so the land can be reclaimed for alternative uses." That's what we're proposing here, and that's what we're trying to do, and that's what our plan does. In addition to that, in addition to mining out the remaining materials and minerals in the land, it would also clean up the site and use the engineering fill generated by the project to regrade the properties and to make them suitable for future development. It will also produce metals that come from a known and reliable mine in this county in our country and that do not rely on uncertain geopolitics in other continents. The Idaho, Maryland mine is blessed with several attributes that make it an ideal project for the modern era. The water in the mine is clean and with a simple treatment facility, it raises the quality of the water to above California drinking water standards. The ore, unlike a lot of other mines, the ore is clean and free of deleterious elements that can plague operations, and this mine would also be subject to California regulatory standards and monitoring. We're in a time when there's an increased focus on emissions and carbon footprint. The ore at the Idaho, Maryland mine is very high-grade, meaning that the operations require less energy and more labor. A high-grade mine like ours produces 90% less CO2 per gram of production than a typical open-pit gold mine. It also produces 75% less CO2 than the average California business on a GDP comparable basis. We've heard from the county's consultants, Rainey Planning and Management, that produced the environmental impact report, over 9,000 pages long, and their conclusion on impacts to air quality, biological resources, water quality, groundwater vibration, or noise from operations were that with mitigation, they fall below the identifiable thresholds. And these, this report was done within the CEQA guidelines here in California that are among the highest standards in the country. the highest standards in the country. Despite the county's compelling EIR, the Nevada County Planning Commission recommended that the county supervisors vote to deny the mining permit on the basis that, quote, "the intensity of mining operations would exceed those that are compatible with the rural character of the surrounding semi-rural area." And now we have the staff report that also echoes that recommendation. We believe that this is at odds with the general plan, and our counsel, Chris Powell from Hanson Bridget, will provide a presentation that addresses the EIR and the county's response and our plan. I also want to recognize our Director of Rise Gold, Ben Mossman, who's with me here today. We also have in the audience two people that were involved with the previous effort to reopen the mine, David Watkinson and Pat Nelson. I want to recognize them and thank them for being here. Finally, I just want to say that, you know, Rise Gold owns the surface land and mineral estate that's associated with the Idaho-Maryland Mine. We're like any other property owner in this room that owns a business or a home, and we expect to be able to make the most of it. We have with us here Megan Wald from Cooper &amp; Kirk, who will address some of the constitutional matters related to property rights that we feel come to bear on our application here today. The county's executive team required an economic study, and that economic report concluded that the project would have no effect on real estate prices and that it would create 475 new local jobs, approximately $45 million in new local labor income. Much of this income would be spent on local businesses. In addition, the study showed that the local tax revenue would increase from anywhere from $1.4 million to $6.4 million a year, which would make Rise Gold the largest taxpayer in the county. As you know, Grass Valley fared well economically during the Great Depression. It had its own mining industry, of which the Idaho-Maryland Mine was just one of three or four major mines. That rewarded the employees and the community, and you see evidence of that in the buildings, the airport, the hospital. The Idaho-Maryland Mine today offers Nevada County and its residents a similar opportunity in the years ahead. I want to thank all of you for coming here today, and thank you for your time, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Mullins.
Here's what we're going to be talking about in this presentation today. Number one, just a project summary of the Idaho-Maryland Mine. Number two, we're going to talk about significant and unavoidable impacts identified in the final EIR. Number three, we're going to talk about certification of the final EIR. As you know, the staff report requests that the board not certify the EIR. Number four, we believe that rezoning to M1ME for the Brunswick property is mandatory under state law, under the county code. Number five, we're going to talk about how the project is consistent with the general plan policies. That's, in fact, what the draft EIR and final EIR found. The staff report, surprisingly to us, when it was released right before the Planning Commission, it really flipped everything the EIR said about general plan consistency on its head. Number six, we're going to talk about the variance. We believe a variance is actually not even necessary in this case, but the findings can be made for this property, which is an extremely unique property, as we'll discuss. Number seven, we need to discuss the Planning Commission hearing and recommendation. Number eight, we want to talk about the use permit, what sort of findings are required to approve a use permit by the Board of Supervisors. And lastly, we just want to delve into some legal considerations. So the historic production of the Idaho-Maryland Mine, as you know, this was one of the highest-producing gold mines in United States history during its time. A total production from 1866 to 1955, 2.4 million ounces of gold were produced with a .5 ounce per ton grade, which is remarkably high. Historic production before World War II, just that period of 1939 to 1941, 120,000 ounces of gold per year were produced. 1,000 tons of ore were produced per day, and the grade at that time was .34 ounces per So if we're successful and you vote to approve this mining project, this would actually be the third highest-grade gold mine in the world based on 2022 data. So I think it's obvious that this is a very special property and that this gold mining operation, if put back into production, would be successful, would employ a lot of people, and would generate a lot of wealth and benefits for the community. So why is this the ideal location for a mine? Probably the most important thing is this has a vertical mine shaft that goes down to 3,400 feet below the surface. That same shaft, if one were to build it from scratch, would cost approximately $60 million to build. So one of the reasons this property is unique, one of the reasons this property is the right place for this type of operation, maybe the only type, the only location for this type of operation, it already has this significant asset built into it that goes down 3,400 feet below the surface. It's already graded and paved, as you can see in the picture here. It's quite flat over a large area of the property. It has a high-voltage power line, which was previously used for the sawmill, which would be necessary for a mining operation. So it already has a lot of infrastructure, such as the clay-lined pond that's necessary for a water treatment system. It's got all these important facilities already built into the property. And importantly, when we're talking about impacts, such as traffic impacts and intensity, this isn't put right into, you know, a subdivision where it's just surrounded by houses on all sides. No, it's sitting right on a designated truck route. So just to look at some of the benefits of the project, which I think are really important to consider today, 312 employees would be employed by this project at an average wage of $145,000 a year. This project would change a lot of lives in the community. Additionally, 163 to 300 induced jobs were estimated. This would also create a lot of work for local contractors due to all the construction required for the project. Local tax revenue, up to $6 million in property taxes per year, would be generated by the project. Additionally, the applicant met with, you know, local community groups, the fire department, the Air District, you know, met with the county, and they've offered to provide Ophir Hill Fire Department $240,000 a year to hire more staff, which would benefit the whole community, not just Rise. $100,000 per year to the Air District to make sure that enforcement occurs. $88,000 per year to Public Works. Additionally, the applicant agreed to pay a one-time payment of $1 million to Ophir Hill Fire Department for a new engine and approximately $258,000 in traffic improvement While a lot of people have a bad image of mining and think about the Old West and the irresponsible practices that took place, using mercury, just dumping it into streams, hydraulic mining, that's not what this mine is. Rise went out of their way to design an environmentally responsible design for the project, one that minimizes noise, puts most of those noise-generating operations within sealed buildings, minimize traffic, protect air quality, protect water quality, and protect local wells. If you look at the EIR, there are countless mitigation measures and specific project features which were done to make the project environmentally responsible. And also, the project changed from the draft EIR to the final EIR in some subtle ways that responded to community concerns to make it even more environmentally friendly. So why should the board have confidence in this process? Well, first of all, there was a lot of prior history of SEQUA review for this project and for related or similar past attempts to open the mine. SEQUA documents existed, were created in 1995 and 2011, the latest one in 2022. And I know Rainey and the applicant looked at those past documents and used that knowledge, used those community concerns in past permitting attempts to design the best project they possibly could. Public comments were submitted to the county on the draft EIR. The county reviewed those, the applicant reviewed those, and the project was redesigned in some subtle ways. Mitigation measures were adjusted to respond to the county, I'm sorry, to the community concerns. As far as the consulting teams that actually put this together, I think it's important to note that the county took the lead on this. This EIR is the county's document. The county hired Rainey. Rainey, and for every resource area, every technical area, there were at least two sets of experts. So while the applicant submitted a lot of technical data to Rainey and to the county, the county had their own set of technical experts that peer-reviewed everything. So during the process, for example, hydro-geological reports may have been submitted by the applicant. Rainey looked at them, they had their own experts look at them and make changes. "We disagree with this. We want you to do this. You should change this mitigation measure." And so everything has had multiple, you know, sets of experts looking at it, and there's been a lot of changes to those documents and mitigation measures and project design features based on that independent peer review. Not only that, but the county planning staff reviewed all the resource sections, looked at all the mitigation measures, approved and released the draft EIR, and then later the final EIR. One of the really important areas, we believe, that there's a lot of community concern about is water, you know, water quality and well analysis. And in fact, three hydro-geological firms were involved in this process, and all felt comfortable with what's in the final EIR. So this isn't just Rise is saying, "Everything's going to be fine. Don't worry about the water. You're fine." No, three very serious, and we believe probably the highest-regarded hydro-geological firm that deals with mining operations in the U.S. was involved. These are serious scientists who looked at this and said, "Okay, here's our conclusion. Here's the mitigation you need." So next, I want to talk about the significant and unavoidable impacts that were identified in the county's final EIR. The first one was temporary construction noise for the water pipeline construction on East Bennett Road. The second was for two intersections, Brunswick Road and Highway 174. The second traffic impact, which was found to be significant and unavoidable, the Q Lane on Sutton Way at Brunswick Road. Importantly, you know, this was only two employees at 3:30 PM. That was considered significant and unavoidable. And then aesthetics, I think what the EIR says is the proposed project would result in noticeable changes to the existing visual character of the project site. So looking at the temporary construction noise first. Short-term noise related to the NID water pipeline would create an impact because there would be noise from that construction that the neighbors nearby would hear. However, it's important to point out that the Nevada County Land Use and Development Code actually exempts temporary construction noise from county noise standards. However, this EIR conservatively found that that temporary construction noise would be a significant and unavoidable impact. I want to note that road construction is going on all the time in the county, all over the place, and that sort of noise is typical and is typically exempted by the county. Similar construction noise is found often to be less than significant after mitigation by the Board of Supervisors. For example, the Nevada County Broadband Program approved in March of 2023. So while I'm not minimizing this impact, this is a temporary impact. It's a normal occurrence in the county that there's some construction noise for road improvement projects, all sorts of public projects. So looking at the next significant and unavoidable impact that was identified in the EIR, this is the intersection of Brunswick Road and Highway 174. So the reason that this was considered a significant and unavoidable impact was not that the applicant was unwilling to pay its fair share to do the improvements, but that this intersection and improvements were not actually in a regional transportation mitigation fee program at the time the EIR was released. Basically, there wasn't yet an established mechanism to pay those fees. And as you know, it's sort of a technical, significant, unavoidable impact. Even if the applicant says, "Yes, I'll pay them," and the county's, you know, intends to do the improvement with the money, if there isn't a legal mechanism to enforce that and to do the improvement, it has to be considered significant and unavoidable. Well, that intersection is now actually in the mitigation fee program. So if the EIR were produced today, that would not be a significant impact, in our opinion. Next, the intersection of Sutton Way and Brunswick Road. This was considered significant and unavoidable because it was modeled that two employees would drive through this intersection at 3:30 PM. So any project that you would approve, that would create two jobs, and I think we would agree creating two jobs is a good thing. Any project that would create two jobs where people would drive through that intersection, that would be a significant and unavoidable impact here. But the reason why is technical again. The mitigation is just to retime the intersection lights, which costs $5,000, and the applicant has agreed to do and is in the EIR as mitigation. However, Nevada County does not have legal authority to tell the city of Grass Valley that they need to do this mitigation. You don't have the ability to say, "You have to do this." Therefore, this is sort of a legally, technically, you know, significant impact. You know, the applicant's willing to pay the money. I don't know if the city of Grass Valley will do this retiming for, you know, two employees, but I just want to kind of describe what the impact actually is. So I think this is a video right here. This is the existing head frame on the property. The shaft is right next to it. So now you're going to see a flat area where the processing plant would be placed. That was formerly a lumber storage area. Next, you see a flat disturbed area where the sawmill was located and where office and warehouses would be placed. Let's see, next, there's a large paved area used for stacking logs, which would be used for parking lot for employees. Okay, the view should rotate in a minute. Okay, and then you're going to see a flat, level field where the service shaft would be placed, also the clay-lined pond, which would be used for water treatment. And then Brunswick Road is sort of to the right there. You can see some cars traveling down it. As you notice, there's trees between the majority of the site where the project would be located and Brunswick Road, which would provide screening. As you can tell, the site is already heavily disturbed and distressed. While the EIR does conservatively conclude that construction of the project would be an aesthetic impact because it would change the views, we believe it'd actually be an aesthetic improvement because the site, as you can tell, it's very distressed, very disturbed, and it looks like an industrial wasteland, and it would be a great improvement when you actually look at the next slide here. So what you're going to see here is the site after the project is constructed. You see the parking lot a little bit there. Going through the parking lot now, and then office building designed to Nevada County guidelines by a certified architect. A warehouse in the background, a process plant. I think the warehouse is on the left side there, and the water treatment plant on the right side. right side. And there's the water treatment pond. And looking east, you can see the tanks are hidden from public view by the buildings. Now you're going to rotate there and see the head frame. The actual color of the proposed head frame was revised from this sort of copper color by county staff to be more neutral, but the county is, is free to change these colors if it wants different colors. Next, we're going to see a drive-by view. This is the intersection of Brunswick and East Bennett. As you can see, there's only a few spots right now where you can really see into the site when you're driving at normal speeds on this road. As more screening trees are planted, there would be fewer and fewer actual views of the site and eventually none. This view, while driving along this road, was considered one of the significant and unavoidable impacts by the county. And we think that's very conservative and probably shouldn't even be significant and unavoidable, given the driving speed and the actual improvement in site conditions caused by construction of the project. So here is the current view of the existing silo, as you can see from that same road. So next is the proposed head frame, and this is the view when screening trees are just planted. Next, this is the view once the screening trees are matured, 15, 20 years or so after they're planted. Here's a view of the entrance to the site. There's fewer trees in this area because it's an entrance area, of course, and you can tell there's electrical contractors on the site while the picture was taken. So here's a view of the fill pile, which is proposed for the Brunswick site. And this is also a very conservative view because this is showing newly planted trees at the base of that fill pile. In fact, those trees would be planted as it's just being built up, so they would be much larger by the time that the fill pile has reached that level. As you can see, what you, you know, the view is really a grassy slope, which is not very different than a lot of views from county highways all across the county. The next slide, you see what the same view would look like when the trees are mature. So most of the hillside's really obscured. You can't see very much from that entrance area. So next, I'd like to talk about certification of the EIR. As you know, the staff report requests that the EIR not be certified. It's important just to recognize, again, this is, this was the county's EIR. Why, let's see, applicant's project, the county's independent EIR firm, Rainey, who we believe did a great job, put together this document, the county reviewed it, the county looked at also the final EIR, all the conclusions on general plan consistency, mitigation measures, and then released that document to the public. The staff report flipped everything on its head and was greatly shocking and surprising to us that so many of the conclusions made in the EIR were completely rejected, turned on their head in the staff report. We believe that the EIR should be certified by the county. And so some important definitions for this determination, I want to point to the county code. The word shall is mandatory and may is permissive under the county code. Similar definition exists in the California Government Code under state law. So the staff recommendation was to not certify the final EIR. However, if you look at the Nevada County Land Use and Development Code, if the lead agency finds that the EIR is complete and has been prepared in accordance with the requirements of SEQA, the lead agency shall certify same. Again, county staff seemed to believe that the EIR was adequate until the staff report for the planning commission was released, planning commission hearing, sorry. So findings required to certify an EIR. Here's the findings required to certify this EIR. The final EIR has been completed in accordance with SEQA. Two, the final EIR was presented to the Board of Supervisors, and the Board of Supervisors reviewed and considered the information contained in the final EIR prior to approving the project. The final EIR reflects the county's independent judgment and analysis. If you look at the staff resolution for today's hearing, it actually includes these elements that the county used its independent judgment in looking at the EIR produced by its independent consulting firm, Rainey Planning and Management. So I, on this slide, I've just got some of the basic legal premises from case law about adequacy of an EIR. An EIR should be prepared with a sufficient degree of analysis to provide decision makers with information that enables them to make a decision, which intelligently takes account of environmental consequences. An evaluation of the environmental effects of a proposed project need not be exhaustive, but the sufficiency of an EIR is to, is to be reviewed in the light of what is reasonably feasible. Disagreement among experts does not make an EIR inadequate, but the EIR should summarize the main points of disagreement among the experts. That one's important because in this case, on the EIR team, the county had its own independent technical experts. We had technical experts on the RISE team, and they ultimately agreed on the conclusions in the EIR. And I know the opposition has, has brought some experts that disagree with those conclusions, but that doesn't mean that the county has to say, well, we've got somebody who disagrees, we can't certify this EIR. That's not what the case law says. Lastly, the courts have looked not for perfection, but for adequacy, completeness, and a good faith effort at full disclosure. In summary, we believe the EIR is adequate. The county code requires the Board of Supervisors to certify it, even if it's going to deny the project. Next, rezone to M1 ME, mineral extraction. So as you know, the staff recommendation is to deny the rezone, based on the assertion that the project does not comply with the, with the general plan. They point to general plan policies 1.1.1, 1.1.2, and so on and so forth to say, well, it doesn't comply with these, so, so you have to deny the ME rezone. However, if you look at the county code and you look at state law, a rezone to a mineral extraction zone is actually mandatory, and I'll explain why. So what is a mineral extraction zone and why is it in the general plan to begin with? Why do you have this? Well, the Surface Mining and Reclamation Act, which is state law, requires counties to create zoning overlays to identify important mineral resources and to prevent encroachment of uses that would conflict with extraction. In other words, don't put houses on land that's necessary for mineral extraction that has important mineral resources on them. So how does this process work? Well, the state designates certain areas as being important, MRZ 2 zones, as you know, and they have various sort of designations for areas that are, there's no minerals here, or there's important minerals here, we think, or there's important minerals here and we know that there's important minerals here. They require, if you look at SMARIA here, use of special purpose overlay zones, mineral resource, open space zoning, or other appropriate zoning, zoning that identifies a presence of identified mineral deposits and protects the same. If you look at the Nevada County General Plan Policy 17.17, the county shall, and again, that definition, I think, is important to keep in mind, that's a mandatory word, the county shall use the ME Mineral Extraction Combining District as a means to provide for public awareness of the potential for surface mining to occur where it has been established that important minerals are present. The ME district shall be used only on those lands which are within the compatible general plan designations and which are not residentially zoned. This, this property is zoned M1. It's zoned for industrial purposes. Therefore, under this policy, even if the county were to reject the project, it's mandatory under state law and under the general plan that it be rezoned for Mineral Extraction Combining District. If you look at Nevada County General Plan, page 181, in order to prevent intrusion of incompatible land uses into areas of identified important mineral resources, the county shall zone land identified as MRZ 2 in the ME Mineral Extracting, Extraction Combining District. So next, let's look at the state map. This is a map produced by the State Mining and Geology Board, and it shows the project site designated as MRZ 2. Standards for creation of an ME district. The standards under the county code, said lands have been designated as MRZ 2, they have, or it has been clearly demonstrated that significant mineral deposits are likely present on said lands based on data similar in nature to the state classification reports. So the standard is that one of these factors be met, both are met. It's, it's a historically significant mine. Everyone understands that there's gold there, and it's actually been designated by the state as MRZ 2. So moving on, this next one, I think is important, we talk about consistency with the general plan. This is a big issue in the staff report, maybe the biggest issue. The EIR, which Rainey prepared, and county staff reviewed the draft, all resource sections, including the land use sections, they reviewed all the public comments, county staff reviewed the final EIR, and all these documents concluded that the project was consistent with the general plan. But again, the staff report, which was issued, I don't know, a couple of weeks or a week before the planning commission, we were shocked to see that it completely changed all those conclusions. And it, it makes us wonder what exactly happened. What changed that the county staff reviewed this document, their independent consultant reached these conclusions, and then entirely different conclusions are reached in the staff report? We are confused by that and, and disturbed by it. A general plan should be used consistently, interpreted consistently for all projects. It should not be used as a black box process, allowing the county to arbitrarily use alleged general plan inconsistency as a trump card to reject projects that it does not want. While you can vote yes or no on projects, using the general plan just as this black box method to justify that is, is not fair. So next, I want to talk about just the general plan, the overall organization of the plan, because I think that really shows that the staff report's wrong in its conclusions. First, the Nevada County General Plan has four central themes. Then below that level, it has supporting themes. Below that level, it has goals, and then even further down, policies. So the way it works is to have a project be consistent with a general central theme, you have to comply with the policies, and then above that, the goals, and then the supporting themes that all lead up to that central theme. That's the way your general plan is set up, but that's not how the staff report actually analyzed the issue of general plan consistency, as you'll see. This is just some case law, just to show what the courts believe counties and cities should keep in mind when interpreting their own general plans. What you're doing really is you're balancing competing goals because, of course, you've got the environment, you've got housing, you've got industry, open space, all, all these things conflict on their face. Can you have open space in an industrial area? Those things are, are competing. So that's your job as supervisors, to weigh those different, weigh those different goals in making determinations. It's established that no project, for that same reason, that these goals are, are competing often in a general plan, no project could completely satisfy every policy, and the state law does not impose such requirement. Rather, the rule of general plan consistency is that the project must at least be compatible with the objectives and policies of the general plan. Just looking at the general plan again, I just want to stress, it's comprised of goals, objectives, policies, and implementation measures, and those lead up to compliance with the general plan. You start at the bottom, the goals, and then the objectives and the policies. Now, we believe that staff interprets the central theme, central theme one, and creates its own goals and policies. It states, the project is not consistent with central theme one because it's too intense. But they don't do the work of going down, okay, well, what are the, the subthemes? What are the goals? What are the policies? That's the way the general plan is set up, and this project does comply with those subthemes, with those policies, with those goals, and those were ignored, and a new concept was added into the, the staff report, which has never been used, to our knowledge, before in this manner, and said, well, it's just too intense. That's not what the general plan says, and we believe that's unfair, the staff report to do that. But let's talk about intensity, because I think it's factually wrong to say the project is too intense for this area. So let's look at noise. The project includes fully enclosed machinery, sound insulated buildings. The rock crushing is underground. Unlike a, a lot of the mines that are in the county, the actual blasting and, and activity, it's deep underground, it's not creating noise. The county has lots of surface mines where the noise, the activity, the emissions, they're on the surface. That's not going on here. They've got a ventilation fan underground, airlocks in the buildings to make sure that the noise isn't excessive. If you look at the noise contours on, contours on this map, that outer contour is only 35 decibels. So it's really hyperbole to say that this is going to be this terrible, terrible project that's going to just, nobody could sleep at night. If you look at the noise contours, you look at the mitigation measures, and the EIR concluded the same. Next, let's take a look at traffic. So this project, total truck trips per day, you know, based on, on the traffic report, 112 is what it would produce. I believe the, the county stated 115. I'm not sure why there's a discrepancy, but it's minor anyway. So 112 truck trips per day is what this project would produce, on average, and it's on a designated truck route. The sawmill that was there previously produced approximately 290. The current zoning, which is an industrial park, the SP zoning, would produce approximately 196. A different quarry approved by the board, the Boca Quarry, also in a rural region, has 1,432 trips per day. The Greenhorn Quarry, 492. Both those projects were considered not too intense. They were considered consistent with the general plan, despite having far more truck, truck trips than this project. Let's take a look at the impact of the, the truck, truck trips and overall traffic volume on Brunswick Road. So the red line shows the traffic, including the project. The blue line shows the traffic without the project. So as you can see, there's hardly a noticeable difference, very small difference. There's a lot of traffic on that road already. So to me, my opinion is that it would, it would be absurd to say, this is such a tremendous increase in traffic from this project, that this is just inconsistent with the general plan. I, I really can't understand that based on this graphic. So next, let's look at some specific general plan policies that the staff report points to, to say that the project is inconsistent with the general plan. So first of all, general plan goal 1.1, promote growth in the community region and discourage in the rural region. in the rural region. The project says the staff is inconsistent with this. So just to go back to, for example, the Boca Quarry or the Greenhorn Quarry, other quarries across the county, those have been approved in the rural region. So I don't understand this new reasoning in the staff report, that you can't put mines in rural regions. The county does approve mines in rural regions. In fact, I think rural regions are probably the most appropriate place to put them. If we were instead putting a mine right in the middle of, of a city in a community region, I imagine that the, the, there would be outcry that, well, it's inconsistent with that. So, you gotta pick one. Which one is it? It's inconsistent with the community region or the rural region? So next, general plan policy 1.1.1, maintain a distinct boundary between rural and community regions. And the staff report says it's not consistent because there's a line in the middle of the Brunswick site that, that represents that boundary. But there's no actual distinct boundary. In fact, this is an existing industrial site. This line between the regions right there was chosen somewhat arbitrarily based on City of Grass Valley's sphere of influence line. So a line was drawn right in the middle of a parking lot where the sawmill was for an industrial operation, and the county is, is now, the staff report seems to say, "Well, this is, there's a distinct boundary here between rural and community, right on this line in this property." But that's not the case. That whole property was an industrial, used property. So this slide, this is showing general plan policy 1.1.2, where the general plan divides the county into community regions and rural regions. And staff says, the staff report says, "The proposed project with 312 employees slated to work at the mine 24 hours a day, seven days a week, would not be consistent with the open rural lifestyle, pastoral character of the surrounding rural residential development to the south of the project. As a result, the intensity of the mining operations exceeded those that are compatible with the low-density residential character of the surrounding area. Thus, as proposed, the project would not be consistent with general plan policy 1.1.2." We disagree with that for the reasons we stated before. The, the county has approved mines that are far more intense, 1,400-plus trips per day, as opposed to the project's 112. So, looking at the same issue from a different angle, if this, if this project's not compatible with the rural region, why does the general plan have the site designated M1 for industrial activity? So does the county not consider this when establishing these, these general plan designations and zoning areas in rural areas? If you can't have industrial activity like this in a rural area, why are there parcels designated M1 in those areas? Is the entire zoning code wrong in allowing mining in rural areas? We believe this is a made-up problem, and the reasoning makes no sense, and is results-oriented rather than a reasonable and fair analysis. Just to look at the actual site here, so here's the line. That shaded area, that's the community region. The parcel that is not colored in there, that's in the rural area. But this whole thing has been a contiguous industrial operation. So one of the goals, if you recall, under the general plan was, "Well, encourage growth in the community region, discourage growth in the rural region." Well, the prac, the project actually sticks to that for the most part. If you look there, most of the buildings, the operations are in the community region, and really, the only thing that's in the rural, rural region where growth is supposed to be discouraged under the general plan is a fill pile, not buildings, not operations, a fill pile, and just a small portion of the parking lot. Next is just a historic photo from 1991, showing that this line is drawn in the middle of an industrial operation. Next, I just want to take a look again at that Boca Quarry expansion, approved in October 2019. So this was 160-acre, 4,000-ton-per-day, open-pit quarry located in Nevada County rural region. It was found to have significant and unavoidable aesthetics impacts, traffic impacts, and air quality impacts beyond what this project has. That staff report said, "Regarding the general plan, the project furthered several of the goals and policies of the county's general plan, some of which are provided below. General plan goal 1.3, within rural regions, maintain and enhance the county's pastoral character, existing land use pattern, rural lifestyle, and economy in their natural setting. General plan policy 1.3.1, provide for land use pattern compatible with preservation of character, environment values and constraints, and the form and orderly development of rural places." The staff report for our project finds the project to be inconsistent with those same goals. We believe that's inconsistent. It's also important to note that the staff report approach, which is really strict, saying, "Well, there's this line created through the middle of your property, and you can't have one industrial site in both these regions." I'm not even sure I really follow the reasoning of, of what they're saying, but basically, you're on this line, it's a magical line, you can't do that, you can't have this mine crossing this line. But that's, that's not what the general plan says. It doesn't say, "You have to strictly enforce this because this magical line is so important." It actually says, "Provide flexibility in the general plan land use provisions, so that variations in land use patterns and activities are permitted within the land use framework established for community regions and rural regions." This sort of strict enforcement, I don't believe there's any precedent of this in county decision-making before. It's a brand-new thing that we believe was invented as a pretext to deny this project. General plan policy 1.4.2. So why am I bringing up this policy? The county says, "Well, you can't, you can't be consistent with the general plan because you have this variance." And if you have a variance, then that means you're not complying with the, with the comprehensive site design standards. If you look at the general plan, what it says basically is, for, I believe it's theme one, if you, if you comply with the comprehensive site design standards, that means you're consistent with the general plan for those reasons. The staff report says, "As proposed, the applicant's request for a variance to increase building heights to a maximum of 165 feet for the headframe building, where 45 feet is required, and the intensity of the, of the mining and industrial use is inconsistent with rural character of the area, as outlined in central theme one discussion, and would therefore be inconsistent with general plan policy 1.4.2." So the way this works, our interpretation, is that if a project complies with the comprehensive site design standards, it is consistent with the general plan through this policy. So if you look at the actual comprehensive design standards, here they are. Let me fast forward here. Okay. So the project was specifically designed to comply with all these comprehensive site development standards. Now if you, there's, there's one which I think is important to talk about, building height. So, on the surface, you could say, "Well, the project does not comply with these standards. Its buildings are too high. It has a headframe that's, you know, 165 feet approximately, for example." However, county requested, you know, three or four years ago, when this project first kicked off, that you need to get a variance for that headframe and for some of these other buildings. So we started going through that, that process. Now, the staff report seems to say, "Well, if you get a variance, you don't comply with these comprehensive site development standards, and you're inconsistent with the general plan." That is logically inconsistent, because how could you approve a project that needs a variance if it's automatically inconsistent with the general plan because it needs a variance for, you know, for building height? It would be impossible to ever approve a project with a variance. You could never grant a variance. The county code shouldn't even have variances in it if it means you're automatically inconsistent with the general plan. So that reasoning makes zero sense. The only logical reasoning for this situation is that if an applicant applies for and obtains a variance, if you vote yes on the variance, if one is required, then it satisfies these comprehensive design standards and is consistent with the general plan. I just want to point real quick to general plan policy 17.6, which states, "The county should encourage extraction of mineral resources in compatible areas prior to intensified urbanization or conversion to other incompatible land use development." The project is zoned M1, it's compatible, it does not have houses on it. Contrary to, to what you've heard, there, there are buffers. There's buffers designed into the project. In fact, the residential areas surrounding have, you know, conditions and buffers built into their own property ownership through county, county approvals in the past. We believe the county staff recommendation actually reverses the intent of policy 17.6, which is actually to encourage extraction. So next, let's, let's dig slightly deeper into that height variance issue. As you know, the staff recommends denial, despite requesting the application for it years ago, with no warning of this attitude that we've recently discovered that it's automatically inconsistent with the general plan, if you have a variance. That we were never told that, we were never told that there's no way you're going to make these findings. That would have been nice to know, maybe we could have redesigned the project three or four years ago, if this was just going to be rejected. So here's the findings that the staff says cannot be made. "The variance of granted would constitute the granting of a special privilege. There's no special circumstances applicable to the subject property. Granting of the requested variance would, under circumstances and conditions applied in this particular case, adversely affect the public health, safety, or welfare, integrity, and character of the district, and the utility and value of nearby property." Or that the variance is not consistent with the Nevada County general plan. They recommend, the staff report recommends denial of the variance, and then, interestingly, which we don't understand the reason for, to take no action on the use permit and other related entitlements. So, we believe that this variance denial recommendation is a manufactured pretext for denial. "This was kept as a surprise after three years of design and study." We could have worked cooperatively with the county to find some different solution if it were ever expressed to us by staff, that this was some major problem. However, we believe they're factually wrong. "The uniqueness of the property is obvious. It has a 3,400-foot-deep existing shaft on the property with a value of approximately $60 million. A clay-lined pond, huge flat areas that are already paved for parking." We believe findings can easily be made by the Board of Supervisors to grant the variance. However, and this is important, the project can actually proceed without approval of the variance under the county code. The process plant and hoist buildings, if the Board of Supervisors chooses to vote so, those can be reduced to 45 feet or below. So if, if you were to consider a motion to approve the project, you could add that as a condition. All those buildings can be 45 feet or low, or lower, except for the headframes, which actually do not require a variance. Under the Nevada County Code, exceptions to height limits, architectural features not intended for human occupancy such as spires, chimneys, vents, skylights, or solar equipment, and non-habitable structures, such as private water tanks, antennas, windmills, and other alternative energy structures, may exceed the allowable building height by no more than 20%. Height increases of more than 20% shall be subject to a use permit. A headframe is a non-habitable structure. No one's going to live in the headframe. In fact, there will not be workers up in the headframe while it's operating. It's going to be similar to solar equipment, or private water tanks, antennas, windmills, where occasionally someone will go up and do maintenance, but they're not in it. The project is already subject to a use permit. So the project, the project's headframes already satisfied this requirement under the county code and don't need a variance. So if, even if the variance findings were something that you believe that was a major problem stopping you from voting yes on the CUP, that shouldn't be an issue. We can reduce the buildings, except for the headframes, and the headframes don't need a variance. Just, just one more quick point. It's habitable, or non-habitable is not defined in the county code, but the county code points to Webster's Dictionary, which defines that term as capable of being lived in, suitable for habitation, which the headframes are not. All right. Next, I'd like to discuss the Planning Commission recommendation. And this is not super fun to discuss, but we believe this is not a fair hearing, not adequate due process, and we believe, you know, some portions of that hearing were a premeditated ambush on the applicant and the project. So the staff draft resolution, just really quickly, it says, "The Nevada County Board of Supervisors, after reviewing and considering the recommendations of the Nevada County Planning Commission," you know, "reaches certain conclusions." So, the point of this slide is this, of course, you're reviewing and considering not only the facts and the EIR about the project, but reviewing what happened to the Planning Commission and the Planning Commission's recommendations. So I'd like to delve into that. What, what happened there? What were the recommendations? So, we were surprised to see what seemed to be a reading of a pre-planned written speech at the end of the hearing, and introduction of allegedly new evidence after the public hearing was closed. I've, I've personally never seen that before, but documents were brought into the hearing and said, "Well, I've got this, and you've never seen this, no one talked about this." I was really surprised by it and disappointed. One of the commissioners, I would say the tone, I think it's accurate, chastised the applicant for daring to propose this project in this community, and specifically mentioned not giving the county a share of the proceeds of the gold. It was described, "How many cubic feet of gold, and you didn't offer any of that to us?" We found that interesting, especially since, and I know applicants met with some of you, but we, we feel like it's been difficult to, to meet with county representatives, to have those discussions about what sort of benefits could be offered to make this project more palatable. I don't think it's been a completely open-door policy, so it was hypocritical to say, "You haven't given us enough share of the proceeds," when we weren't really able to have those conversations that other developers probably are able to have. So, one of the documents which was introduced as allegedly new information after the close of the public hearing was a letter that was actually already received, so it wasn't new information, on the EIR as a comment letter from the, the Air District. However, the one that was introduced had a signature that was never on the original document, and a date that was never on the original document, so it had been tampered with, and then introduced in the hearing after the public hearing closed, without a chance for us to respond. If we had a chance to respond, what we would have said was, "This letter was propaganda that was written by somebody at the district. We met with the district and asked them to rescind it. They submitted a replacement letter, and the person who wrote this letter is no longer at the district, to our knowledge." Next is a Next is another piece of information which was allegedly new information introduced after the close of the public hearing. So when this piece of information was introduced after the public hearing closed, I think it's accurate to say that both Rainey and the applicant were chastised, shamed for not, for the omission of not knowing about this document. However, it was actually in the EIR, so it wasn't true, but that's what occurred at the hearing. On the issue of what houses, what replacement water should be provided for, one of the things that was raised was, well, there's a couple houses that M-Gold is proposing to provide water to that RISE is not. And it was stated, "M-Gold had it right, you got it wrong," by excluding these houses. I just want to, I just want to point out that RISE actually funded a way more expensive hydro-geological study that looked at a lot more factors to make sure that it was completely accurate, because that was the number-one community concern in our mind, water quality, water supply to local wells. This new model looked at things such as stream flow and all sorts of different factors. It really tried to make a real-world model. The reason that those houses were excluded under the new plan is because they're next to a creek, and the model showed that their well, their well level would not drop due to the influence of the creek. The M-Gold model was far less sophisticated. It didn't have inputs such as, "What's the effect of this creek over here or this pond over here?" That's why it included those houses. It was a less sophisticated model. RISE was not trying to get out of mitigating an impact.
Mr. Powell, we're going to take a quick five-minute bio break. I just wanted to pause you very quickly. Briefly, a break here with the board. We'll be right back.
Thank you.
On that issue, but even if it were a problem, alternative three in the project avoids that and would avoid that whole boundary issue. So if that were a real problem, there's an alternative already included in the EIR which avoids it. So looking at the slide that we have up here, talking again about the planning commission hearing and the evidence that was submitted at that hearing. Jennifer Hansen from NID appeared at the hearing and she requested a $14 million bond for protection of water wells in the community. Now, I do want to state, RISE is open to providing a bond. We're happy to have those discussions, absolutely. But where did this number come from is what I want to talk about. I think the number's probably too high, but we're willing to have those discussions if that would, you know, change your mind about the project. If that's important, we're willing to listen. But we submitted a Public Records Act.
Stand by, Mr. Powell. Just one sec, we have a tech issue.
Are you getting it now? No. Chair Bralik, we're going to request a five-minute tech break.
Okay, five minutes. Okay, we're going to reconvene. Mr. Powell, thanks for your patience.
Thank you. So just to reiterate, NID general manager Jennifer Hansen appeared at the hearing and requested a $14 million bond, which we're willing to discuss having a bond for this purpose. But when asked about, "Where did that number come from?", she said, "I can't speak to the modeling. I have not personally reviewed the modeling outputs, the calibration, or the assumptions that have been made. I would not say that I am by any means an expert in their technical studies that were completed in this particular project." So we submitted a Public Records Act request to try to figure out where these numbers came from. And the number, 14 million, that came from a certain assumed cost based on 527 parcels. So where did 527 parcels come from? And did they use a certain modeling, like a hydro geological study, to determine that those parcels would be affected? We still have not yet been provided that information. It's completely unclear. NID has not told us where 527 parcels came from. So we tried to figure it out. Here's the whole mineral rights area. There's only 125 parcels without NID service excluding the East Bennett area, which would already be connected via this project. The proposed underground mining area actually only has 10 parcels without NID service excluding the East Bennett area. So it didn't come from this. It didn't come from the hydro geological studies produced by the applicant's team or by the county's team. I think it should be looked at, did it come from this? This is the CEA map that has these sort of cartoonish bubbles around the area. That number seems to correlate with this. So this is, in our minds, suspicious and inappropriate that an agency such as NID would not use any sort of real scientific modeling, but would take an opposition flyer and use that to make a specific bond request. Again, we're happy to discuss having a bond. That's completely acceptable, but this is not if this was the source of it. So next, I'd like to talk about the use permit and the findings required for the county to approve a use permit. Additionally, the staff recommendation. So the staff recommends that the county take no action on the use permit. However, the county code says, "The planning agency shall," which is mandatory, "approve, approve with conditions, or disapprove the application within 30 days after the conclusion of a public hearing." So there really isn't an option under the county code to take no action on this use permit. And we ask that you take an action to approve, approve with conditions, or disapprove of the application. Our preference is, of course, that you approve, but what the county staff is asking you to do violates the county code. And I don't really understand the reason for that and ask that you not follow that So here's the list of findings that the county has to make to approve a use permit. And we believe that this project meets all those findings. It's consistent with the general plan. That's what the EIR says. It's consistent with the zoning district. That's true. It does need the ME overlay, and that should be approved. Its proposed use and facilities meet all provisions of the code, including the site development standards. That's accurate. It was designed specifically to do so. It's adequate in size and shape and location to accommodate the proposed use. Clearly is. It already had that use in the past on the same property. That it's compatible with, not detrimental to existing and anticipated future uses on site, abutting property in the nearby surrounding neighborhood or area. Yes, there are neighborhoods nearby, but we think it's been greatly exaggerated, the impact this project would have, given the 35 decibel noise, the very small percentage of additional traffic put on a designated truck route. Adequate public facilities and public services exist or have been provided for within the project area. We talked about the high voltage power line right there. There's already an NID water hookup on the property. All feasible mitigation measures have been imposed upon the project. We believe they have. If there are other mitigation measures that the board would like to introduce or consider, RISE would be happy to discuss those with you if you think there's a specific issue that can be mitigated. The conditions provided in the decision are deemed necessary to protect the public health, safety, and general welfare. We think that's also true. So the staff report, in our opinion, is inconsistent with the EIR and the economic report. Under the EIR, it states that "The proposed project would avoid or otherwise mitigate the majority of its potentially significant environmental impacts while furthering county policies." Overall, "The proposed project would not cause a significant environmental impact due to conflicts with a land use plan, policy, or regulation." So this is what the EIR says. However, the staff report directly contradicts that, and we're confused about why and when and how that suddenly changed. If you look at the final economic impact that the county prepared, the county's own economic impact, it states that they found no conclusive evidence to assert that the proposed project would have a significant impact on local property values. I just want to show you on this slide, here's the history of the county making approvals, recognizing the right to mine on the property, and creating buffers, creating notice for nearby neighbors as housing was approved. If you look, importantly, in 1996, there was an approval of a use permit with a 71-foot tall head frame. It was, the project at that point was not considered too intense. The variance was not considered to be inconsistent with the general plan. If you look at 2006, where residential development was approved on New Brunswick Court, "A mitigation measure specifically included to notify future property owners of the potential for mineral resource extraction to occur in the area." So next, I'd like to talk about legal considerations. As you know, the U.S. and California constitutions prohibit taking of private property for public use without just compensation. Also, as you're aware, the Fourteenth Amendment guarantees a fair process through due process and equal protection. Our opinion, our observation is this process has not entirely been fair or equal to processes granted to other applicants. These constitutional rights that relate to process and an individual's right to use their property cannot be thrown away lightly. I sincerely do appreciate the supervisor's serious attention today and fair consideration of this project, which I can readily observe. However, my personal opinion is that thus far, leading up to this hearing, the applicant has not been treated fairly. And it's unfortunate that the applicant was willing to be a partner in this process and hasn't really been treated fairly through the whole process. I apologize if these next slides appear in bad taste or that they are intended as a threat, which is not my intent, but I need to express the gravity of this situation where an unfair process creates a due process violation and/or a taking of a significant property right. So this is a case in Sacramento County involving a gravel mine where the applicant, I'm sorry, where the mine owner was denied their constitutional right. That resulted in a $107 million jury verdict in federal court against the county. That was settled in two parts, a $58.5 million settlement and a $20 million settlement. So the next slide is a similar case in Half Moon Bay. This was not a mine. This was a development project. And the applicant was deprived their constitutional rights in this case due to Half Moon Bay's unfair treatment of them. They filed a lawsuit, and the city said to the $30 million lawsuit, "I don't take it seriously at all." The verdict was for 36, I'm sorry, the judgment was for $36.8 million, and the city's reaction was, "Surprised? That's an understatement. I'm speechless and devastated by this. We have no indication from the courts or the attorneys. Our legal team was very competent." For this particular project, it's unique in some ways because thousands of acres of the project, there are no surface rights. The only thing you can do with that property is mine it. So in fact, the county is saying that no mining, no how, no mining anywhere. There's nothing you can do to fix this project or mitigate it. Just no mining allowed for this property right. That is 100% taking of this property. And I'll note that these properties are actually zoned for mining. The zoning code, the general plan, allows mining. So in conclusion, and I think we may be able to wrap up before noon, which is good news. Number one, the county's own EIR shows minimal, significant, and unavoidable impacts. Certification of the final EIR is mandatory under the county code. Rezoning to the mineral extraction combining district is mandatory under the general plan and state law. The county staff analysis invents new general plan policies that aren't in the general plan and treats this project differently than it treats other projects. A variance can be granted, but it's not actually required. The planning commission recommendation is tainted by an unfair process. County staff asks that the board violate the constitution, general plan, county code, and ignore its own EIR. As you know, the board represents the entire community, not just special interest groups. Mine opponents wish the county to take RISE's mineral property. However, the county can do that, but just compensation must then be paid. We ask that the county approve the project. I'm just going to hand it over for some brief comments from Megan Wold.
Thank you, Mr. Powell, and thank you to the Board of Supervisors for your attention today. I'm sure you recall that I spoke to you at the vested right hearing, and I won't repeat my biographical information, but again, I thank you for listening. We're all familiar with the individual rights guaranteed by the U.S. Constitution through the Bill of Rights. These include the First Amendment guarantees of free speech and assembly and the freedom of the press, and the guarantee against unreasonable search and seizure, or excessive fines, or the right to an impartial jury. And the California Constitution contains similar protections, too. No less fundamental than these other rights is the fundamental protection for private property rights, which is also contained in the U.S. and the California constitutions. This right is the protection against a government taking of private property. In the words of the Fifth Amendment, "Nor shall private property be taken for public use without the payment of just compensation." RISE has a property right in the 2,560 acres of mineral rights that it owns in Nevada County associated with the Idaho-Maryland mine. The Fifth Amendment of the United States Constitution and its analog in the California Constitution in the Declaration of Rights, Section 19, protect this property right. That mineral estate that RISE owns is a separate, freehold estate under California law, and the only possible use of those 2,560 acres of mineral rights is mining. If RISE is denied the approvals that it seeks today, then RISE's property interest in that mineral estate will be entirely taken. To be sure, the U.S. and the California constitutions allow a government to take private property for a public purpose, but the U.S. and California constitutions demand that the government pay just compensation to the property owner as a result. And RISE's mineral estate is extremely valuable. Just compensation would be conservatively estimated at hundreds of millions of dollars. That is appropriate because the Takings Clause is a fundamental constitutional protection for private property rights, and it is no less significant than other familiar constitutional rights like those in the First Amendment, the guarantee of freedom of speech, assembly, and freedom of the press. You may have heard or read that RISE will not prevail on its Takings claim because there are other uses for its surface properties. That does not accurately describe the relevant legal standards and their application here. RISE owns 2,560 acres of subsurface mineral rights. Those rights are a separate property interest under California law, and the only use of those rights is mining. And if RISE is denied the approvals that it seeks today, it will be deprived of 100% of the only possible use for those 2,560 acres of valuable subsurface mining rights. So if Nevada County chooses to take that property right from RISE, then the U.S. and California constitutions will require Nevada County to pay RISE just compensation for those rights. And again, even conservatively, the estimate of that value is very high. I'd like to leave you with an example to illustrate that this is not theoretical. In a case called Whitney Benefits versus United States, the U.S. Court of Appeals for the Federal Circuit considered a similar circumstance. There, a mining company owned coal deposits in Wyoming. A federal law forbid the company from mining those coal deposits. The court concluded that the law at issue affected a taking of the mining company's property rights in the coal deposits. The coal deposits were a mineral estate that state law recognized as a separate property right, just like RISE's mineral estate here, and the federal government's restriction on coal mining was a total taking of that property right. In Whitney Benefits versus United States, the federal government was forced to pay damages and compound interest and attorney's fees to the mining company, just compensation, again with that interest and fees, which ultimately totaled more than $300 million. I'll pass it back to Mr. Powell to conclude.
Again, I just want to thank the chairman and the supervisors for their attention to this. Thank you for your time. We will be available, I suppose, after the break or now if you want, to answer any questions that you have.
Okay. Thank you to the applicant team. Thank you, Mr. Powell. We're going to recess for lunch and then come back and have board questions. We'll see you then. We'll see you at 1:30.
Ready Nevada County is an education campaign designed to help the public have successful outcomes during emergency events. We really focus on a whole host of disasters or emergency events. We want to have a broad spectrum. We want to be prepared for anything. But really, we focus a lot on wildfire because we know that's one of the most likely events to happen in Nevada County.
Ready, Set, Go is really built around the wildfire premise, to prepare residents to be ready before an event, to move into the set posture when there's a red flag or a fire is near you, and then to go when it's time to go.
Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a three-tiered community emergency preparedness
I have lived in this house, which we built, my husband and I, 26 years ago now, actually. We selected the hardy plank, the concrete siding, and also the metal roof. Then when we moved up here and heard about the 49er fire, that's when we started to say, "Wow, this really is even more important than we first realized."
So the 49er fire is one of the most historic fires in Nevada County's history. They figured it, it changed the laws of the state of California that said, "This is how you have to protect your home." That came out of Nevada County.
Steve Eubanks came from the Fire Safe Council, and the main thing we needed to pay attention to was the ladder fuels. Planting has been removed from the edges of the house so that it does not touch the house. It was an incredible service from the Fire Safe Council to come out and spend a couple of hours going through this property.
So the ready phase is when there's no immediate threat to you and your family. This is the time where you should be doing education and planning, whether that be training, educating yourself, or accumulating equipment, hardening your home, creating defensible space.
Defensible space is really all about creating a buffer zone between your house and flammable vegetation. We really focus on defensible space around the home, that first 100 feet, but also around the roadway, too. Another aspect of the ready phase is hardening the home, and really what that means is making your home more resilient to wildfire.
That's going to be putting the fine-grained mesh around the vents of your home so that embers won't get into under your house or into the eaves of your house. That's going to be using non-combustible materials on your deck and around your home so when an ember storm comes through, it's not going to ignite your home itself.
I currently live here in Grass Valley with my parents. All of us have sleep apnea, so we all have CPAP machines that require power in order to run.
I also use a nebulizer, and that's used to disperse medication that I need to get myself breathing again. When we have safety shut-offs, we have to hook up our equipment to batteries that have inverters.
We have a generator that powers some of the things around the house, but then I obtained a pretty substantial battery from Freed. And it was so easy to go through the process to obtain a battery that I would recommend it to anyone who might have medical needs that require power, or really anything. I would highly recommend contacting Freed.
So whether it's a snowstorm or a public safety power shut-off, we really want folks to be thinking about, okay, what are the things I'll need on hand to weather the storm? Do I need to have candles? Do I need to have battery-powered radio? Do I need to have flashlights? So what are the things that you'll need to shelter in place or address the disaster at hand?
So a go-bag could be anything. It could be a backpack. It could be a suitcase. It's going to be something that you put together to sustain yourself, your family, your pets, if needed. That's going to have food, water, medication, clothing, toiletries to get you by for 72 hours. You need to think of your go-bag as the only resource you may have. Stores may be closed, the power may be out, so you may have to literally live out of this thing for a three-day period as an evacuee.
If you are someone with a disability, maybe you have a chronic health condition. For me, I have type 1 diabetes. I have an insulin pump, right? And so that's a critical piece that I need to plan for if I'm going to ever evacuate or be away from my house, frankly, for any amount of time, right? What we find often is that if people don't evacuate with their CPAP machine, with their oxygen concentrator, with their wheelchair, walker, then it can be difficult on the other
My name's Ulysses Palencia. I work in the 2-1-1 call center. I'm just a resident of Grass Valley. I have two daughters, a four-year-old and a one-year-old. In Nevada County, 2-1-1 is available 24/7. So what we provide for the community is information. That can be anything from directions to the resource centers. It can be letting them know where the fire is, you know, if they are themselves in an evacuation center, if it's a fire, if there's any information as to whether their power's coming back on during a PSPS. 2-1-1 gets the information that we provide directly from the county, so directly from the Office of Emergency Services. The whole team cares. We're all local community members.
So we were all sleeping in bed on Thursday, November 8th, in paradise. And first, the house phone rang. Picked up my phone, it was my sister who lived a block or so away from us.
We were woken by a telephone call from my daughter. She said that we were being evacuated.
I left sooner than them. I had everything ready. They were on the way out the door.
There was not time to think about what you're going to take, what you're not going to take.
The night before the fire, I knew it was a red flag warning, and I knew that it was a high risk. So on my way home, I filled up the tank.
On our way out, we didn't get too far from the house, and we're watching a fire coming down the hill.
There was a machine shop right to my right, right there, and it had gas tanks and propane tanks. And I saw a lone ember kind of floating through, dancing through the air, and I watched it as it landed on the machine shop. In the time it took me to get my phone back into hand and to take a picture, it was engulfed in flames. And I knew that within moments, it would start exploding, and I would be dead. And just as I moved out of the range of the explosions, they started happening, and I prayed for the people behind me.
10-minute drive normally to Chico became almost four hours. So it was a long trip.
We started to hear a pattern. People kept telling us their story of how they escaped the campfire, and they talked about how if it wasn't for my neighbor who came and knocked on my door to tell me there was a fire, I don't know that I would have gotten out alive. If it was... If it wasn't for my son, who lives next door, picking me up and putting me in their car and driving me out of there, I don't know how I would have survived. And so I started really thinking about this connection between isolation and how connected you are to your community, to your neighbors, to your friends, to your family, and how that can be really helpful in a time of a disaster.
So we were actually the beneficiaries of someone making that plan in advance to have that group of people that they were going to call. And that, she saved my life that day, so absolutely having that network really saved lives.
Find your five. The idea is that, you know, find trusted allies that can be there and can be responsive and will check in with you if a disaster were to happen.
So we recommend that you put people in your network that are down the street, that are maybe the next town over, that are outside the county, and maybe even outside the state.
The final tier of the Ready, Set, Go is that go piece, and it's simply that. It's go. Evacuation information comes in two types. The first type could be an evacuation warning. This is essentially information that we're going to push out to the public, notifying them of a potential threat in their area where they may have to evacuate their home. An evacuation order is essentially that. We are telling people that it's time to go. There is an imminent threat to life, and we do not believe that you have much time to leave the area.
Code Red is an opt-in alerting system that will dial your number. It'll send you a phone call, a text message, and an email notifying you of an emergency. That message is sent from our office, the Office of Emergency Services. It's going to be very targeted to your area, and it'll be specific to you.
At 5:13, the phone rang with the Code Red call. And so as I was going up 49, I could look over to the left and see the flames in the canyon.
The next layer is for staff to actually be out driving in the areas with a high-low siren. There's no other reason you'll hear that in an area unless we're putting out that evacuation order, not a warning, but an order.
My day started routine patrol. Came in, and I was notified by dispatch to respond out to the Jones fire. Houses that had evacuation tags made it so we could just pass by. We knew that the residents had already been evacuated. Residences that did not have the tags, we would have to physically go in, knock on the door, look in the windows, make sure there were no occupants inside.
Once you've been evacuated, as you're leaving, put this tag somewhere very, you know, clearly identifiable, whether it's a mailbox, a gate, your address marker, so that deputies and officers can quickly identify if your residence has already been evacuated.
I mean, you look out my back window here on the east side, and you see how close this fire came. It was certainly a shock, and at the same time, it was such an incredible relief to have the house as safe as it was.
I mean, I think with personal preparedness and being ready, it can feel overwhelming. It can feel like a lot to do, and the most important piece is to just start with one little bite at a time.
Just start the conversation. Have some sort of plan. It can be as small as a meetup place, you know, a destination that everybody will get to, everybody in the household will get to if there's a disaster.
Recognize you live in a community, in a county, that really does take the emergency response as a priority. We have worked diligently throughout the last few years on ensuring that not only our staff are trained and prepared, but we're also putting that out for our community. The more prepared you are in your own community, the better the outcome is going to be.
The level of community awareness, they have to be part of the solution. They have to communicate with their neighbors. They have to be part of the discussion in communities. They have to support the response, the prevention, the education, and ultimately, the collaboration and the engagement. People have to be engaged at all levels.
The more you think about it now, the easier it will be when the time comes that you need to evacuate.
We've created this network, and we want you to make sure that you know that you can tap into that. So if you are feeling a little bit overwhelmed, not sure where to start, reach out to one of our offices, reach out to the Fire Safe Council or 2-1-1. We're here to support you. Ready Nevada County is an education campaign designed to help the public have successful outcomes during emergency events. We really focus on a whole host of disasters or emergency events. We want to have a broad spectrum. We want to be prepared for anything. But really, we focus a lot on wildfire because we know that's one of the most likely events to happen in Nevada County.
Ready, Set, Go is really built around the wildfire premise to prepare residents to be ready before an event, to move into the set posture when there's a red flag or a fire is near you, and then to go when it's time to go.
Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a three-tiered community emergency preparedness plan.
I have lived in this house, which we built, my husband and I, 26 years ago now, actually. We selected the hardy plank, the concrete siding, and also the metal roof. Then when we moved up here and heard about the 49er fire, that's when we started to say, wow, this really is even more important than we first realized.
So the 49er fire is one of the most historic fires in Nevada County's history. They figured it changed the laws of the state of California that said, this is how you have to protect your home. That came out of Nevada County.
Steve Eubanks came from the Fire Safe Council, and the main thing we needed to pay attention to was the ladder fuels. Planting has been removed from the edges of the house so that it does not touch the house. It was an incredible service from the Fire Safe Council to come out and spend a couple of hours going through this property.
So the ready phase is when there's no immediate threat to you and your family. This is the time where you should be doing education and planning, whether that be training, educating yourself, or accumulating equipment, hardening your home, creating defensible space.
Defensible space is really all about creating a buffer zone between your house and flammable vegetation. We really focus on defensible space around the home, that first 100 feet, but also around the roadway, too. Another aspect of the ready phase is hardening the home, and really what that means is making your home more resilient to wildfire.
That's going to be putting the fine-grained mesh around the vents of your home so that embers won't get into under your house or into the eaves of your house. That's going to be using non-combustible materials on your deck and around your home so when an ember storm comes through, it's not going to ignite your home itself.
I currently live here in Grass Valley with my parents. All of us have sleep apnea, so we all have CPAP machines that require power in order to run.
I also use a nebulizer, and that's used to disperse medication that I need to get myself breathing again. When we have safety shut-offs, we have to hook up our equipment to batteries that have inverters.
We have a generator that powers some of the things around the house, but then I obtained a pretty substantial battery from Freed, and it was so easy to go through the process to obtain a battery that I would recommend it to anyone who might have medical needs that require power, or really anything. I would highly recommend contacting Freed.
So whether it's a snowstorm or a public safety power shut-off, we really want folks to be thinking about, okay, what are the things I'll need on hand to weather the storm? Do I need to have candles? Do I need to have battery-powered radio? Do I need to have flashlights? So what are the things that you'll need to shelter in place or address the disaster at hand?
So a go-bag could be anything. It could be a backpack. It could be a suitcase. It's going to be something that you put together to sustain yourself, your family, your pets, if needed. That's going to have food, water, medication, clothing, toiletries to get you by for 72 hours. You need to think of your go-bag as the only resource you may have. Stores may be closed. The power may be out. So you may have to literally live out of this thing for a three-day period as an evacuee.
If you are someone with a disability, maybe you have a chronic health condition. For me, I have type 1 diabetes. I have an insulin pump, right? And so that's a critical piece that I need to plan for if I'm going to ever evacuate or be away from my house, frankly, for any amount of time, right? What we find often is that if people don't evacuate with their CPAP machine, with their oxygen concentrator, with their wheelchair, walker, then it can be difficult on the other end.
My name's Ulysses Palencia. I work in the 2-1-1 call center. I'm just a resident of Grass Valley. I have two daughters, a four-year-old and a one-year-old. In Nevada County, 2-1-1 is available 24/7. So what we provide for the community is information. That can be anything from directions to the resource centers. It can be letting them know where the fire is, you know, if they are themselves in an evacuation center, if it's a fire, if there's any information as to whether power's coming back on during a PSPS. 2-1-1 gets the information that we provide directly from the county, so directly from the Office of Emergency Services. The whole team cares. We're all local community members. We all just want to help.
So we were all sleeping in bed on Thursday, November 8th, in Paradise. And first, the house phone rang. Picked up my phone. It was my sister who lived a block or so away from us.
We were woken by a telephone call from my daughter. She said that we were being evacuated.
I left sooner than them. I had everything ready. They were on the way out the door.
There was not time to think about what you're going to take, what you're not going to take.
The night before the fire, I knew it was a red flag warning, and I knew that it was a high risk. So on my way home, I filled up the tank.
On our way out, we didn't get too far from the house, and we're watching a fire coming down the hill.
There was a machine shop right to my right, right there, and it had gas tanks and propane tanks. And I saw a lone ember kind of floating through, dancing through the air, and I watched it as it landed on the machine shop. In the time it took me to get my phone back into hand and to take a picture, it was engulfed in flames. And I knew that within moments, it would start exploding, and I would be dead. And just as I moved out of the range of the explosions, they started happening, and I prayed for the people behind me.
10-minute drive normally to Chico became almost four hours. So it was a long trip.
We started to hear a pattern. People kept telling us their story of how they escaped the campfire, and they talked about how if it wasn't for my neighbor who came and knocked on my door to tell me there was a fire, I don't know that I would have gotten out alive. If it wasn't for my son, who lives next door, picking me up and putting me in their car and driving me out of there, I don't know how I would have survived. And so I started really thinking about this connection between isolation and how connected you are to your community, to your neighbors, to your friends, to your family, and how that can be really helpful in a time of a disaster.
So we were actually the beneficiaries of someone making that plan in advance to have that group of people that they were going to call. And that, she saved my life that day, so absolutely having that network really saved lives.
Find your five. The idea is that, you know, find trusted allies that can be there and can be responsive and will check in with you if a disaster were to happen.
So we recommend that you put people in your network that are down the street, that are maybe the next town over, that are outside the county, and maybe even outside the state.
The final tier of the Ready, Set, Go is that go piece, and it's simply that. It's go. Evacuation information comes in two types. The first type could be an evacuation warning. This is essentially information that we're going to push out to the public, notifying them of a potential threat in their area where they may have to evacuate their home. An evacuation order is essentially that. We are telling people that it's time to go. There is an imminent threat to life, and we do not believe that you have much time to leave the area.
Code Red is an opt-in alerting system that will dial your number. It'll send you a phone call, a text message, and an email notifying you of an emergency. That message is sent from our office, the Office of Emergency Services. It's going to be very targeted to your area, and it'll be specific to you.
At 5:13, the phone rang with the Code Red call. And so as I was going up 49, I could look over to the left and see the flames in the canyon.
The next layer is for staff to actually be out driving in the areas with a high-low siren. There's no other reason you'll hear that in an area unless we're putting out that evacuation order, not a warning, but an order.
My day started routine patrol. Came in, and I was notified by dispatch to respond out to the Jones fire. Houses that had evacuation tags made it so we could just pass by. We knew that the residents had already been evacuated. Residences that did not have the tags, we would have to physically go in, knock on the door, look in the windows, make sure there were no occupants inside.
Once you've been evacuated, as you're leaving, put this tag somewhere very, you know, clearly identifiable, whether it's a mailbox, a gate, your address marker, so that deputies and officers can quickly identify if your residence has already been evacuated.
I mean, you look out my back window here on the east side, and you see how close this fire came. It was certainly a shock, and at the same time, it was such an incredible relief to have the house as safe as it was.
I mean, I think with personal preparedness and being ready, it can feel overwhelming. It can feel like a lot to do, and the most important piece is to just start with one little bite at a time.
Just start the conversation. Have some sort of plan. It can be as small as a meetup place, you know, a destination that everybody will get to, everybody in the household will get to if there's a disaster.
Recognize you live in a community, in a county, that really does take the emergency response as a priority. We have worked diligently throughout the last few years on ensuring that not only our staff are trained and prepared, but we're also putting that out for our community. The more prepared you are in your own community, the better the outcome is going to be.
The level of community awareness, they have to be part of the solution. They have to communicate with their neighbors. They have to be part of the discussion in communities. They have to support the response, the prevention, the education, and ultimately, the collaboration and the engagement. and ultimately the collaboration and the engagement. People have to be engaged at all levels.
The more you think about it now, the easier it will be when the time comes.
From the foothills of the Sierra Nevada, a new hero will emerge. One who is ready. One who makes sure their friends and family are set. And has the power to go at a moment's notice. This fire season, you're the hero. We are Ready Nevada County.
Nevada County has a new tool to make evacuations safer and more efficient in the event of an emergency. This new tool is called Zone Haven and we need you to know your zone. In order to know your zone, you need to go to community.zonehaven.com, type in your address. Once your address populates in the pop-up window, take that information and write down the zone that is given to you where you know you'll find it in case of emergency.
Zone Haven and knowing your zone does not replace NICSOL and/or Code Red. It actually supplements them and it makes those tools more powerful because you will know what zones are being evacuated or which ones are being placed on advisory. And as a result, you won't have to do anything else other than listen to those messages and know if it's time to go.
Even if you don't have internet, this could be done by word of mouth. It can be done by radio or it could be us driving down the street. So please know your zone.
From Truckee to Lake of the Pines, from Chicago Park to Spenceville, every single square mile of Nevada County has a zone. And having a zone that you know for your neighborhood is going to help you save time to be able to evacuate and keep you and your family safe.
Ready Nevada County is an education campaign designed to help the public have successful outcomes during emergency events. We really focus on a whole host of disasters or emergency events. We want to have a broad spectrum. We want to be prepared for anything. But really, we focus a lot on wildfire because we know that's one of the most likely events to happen in Nevada County.
Ready, Set, Go is really built around the wildfire premise to prepare residents to be ready before an event, to move into the set posture when there's a red flag or a fire is near you, and then to go when it's time to go.
Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a three-tiered community emergency preparedness plan.
I have lived in this house, which we built, my husband and I, 26 years ago now, actually. We selected the hardy plank, the concrete siding, and also the metal roof. Then when we moved up here and heard about the 49er fire, that's when we started to say, wow, this really is even more important than we first realized.
So the 49er fire is one of the most historic fires in Nevada County's history. They figured it changed the laws of the state of California that said, this is how you have to protect your home. That came out of Nevada County.
Steve Eubanks came from the Fire Safe Council. And the main thing we needed to pay attention to was the ladder fuels. Planting has been removed from the edges of the house so that it does not touch the house. It was an incredible service from the Fire Safe Council to come out and spend a couple of hours going through this property.
So the ready phase is when there's no immediate threat to you and your family. This is the time where you should be doing education and planning, whether that be training, educating yourself, or accumulating equipment, hardening your home, creating defensible space.
Defensible space is really all about creating a buffer zone between your house and flammable vegetation. We really focus on defensible space around the home, that first 100 feet, but also around the roadway too. Another aspect of the ready phase is hardening the home. And really what that means is making your home more resilient to wildfire.
That's going to be putting the fine-grained mesh around the vents of your home so that embers won't get into under your house or into the eaves of your house. That's going to be using non-combustible materials on your deck and around your home. So when an ember storm comes through, it's not going to ignite your home itself.
I currently live here in Grass Valley with my parents. All of us have sleep apnea. So we all have CPAP machines that require power in order to run.
I also use a nebulizer and that's used to disperse medication that I need to get myself breathing again. When we have safety shut offs, we have to hook up our equipment to batteries that have inverters.
We have a generator that powers some of the things around the house, but then I obtained a pretty substantial battery from Freed. And it was so easy to go through the process to obtain a battery that I would recommend it to anyone who might have medical needs that require power, or really anything. I would highly recommend contacting Freed.
So whether it's a snowstorm or a public safety power shut off, we really want folks to be thinking about, okay, what are the things I'll need on hand to weather the storm? Do I need to have candles? Do I need to have battery powered radio? Do I need to have flashlights? So what are the things that you'll need to shelter in place or address the disaster at hand?
So a go bag could be anything. It could be a backpack. It could be a suitcase. It's going to be something that you put together to sustain yourself, your family, your pets if needed. That's going to have food, water, medication, clothing, toiletries to get you by for 72 hours. You need to think of your go bag as the only resource you may have. Stores may be closed. The power may be out. So you may have to literally live out of this thing for a three day period as an evacuee.
If you are someone with a disability, maybe you have a chronic health condition. For me, I have type one diabetes. I have an insulin pump, right? And so that's a critical piece that I need to plan for if I'm going to ever evacuate or be away from my house frankly, for any amount of time, right? What we find often is that if people don't evacuate with their CPAP machine, with their oxygen concentrator, with their wheelchair, walker, then it can be difficult on the other end.
My name is Ulysses Palencia. I work in the 2-1-1 call center. I'm just a resident of Grass Valley. I have two daughters, a four year old and a one year old. In Nevada County, 2-1-1 is available 24/7. So what we provide for the community is information. That can be anything from directions to the resource centers. It can be letting them know where the fire is. You know, if they are themselves in an evacuation center, if it's a fire, if there's any information as to whether their power's coming back on during a PSPS. 2-1-1 gets the information that we provide directly from the county. So directly from the Office of Emergency Services. The whole team cares. We're all local community members. We all just want to help.
So we were all sleeping in bed on Thursday, November 8th in Paradise. And first, the house phone rang. Picked up my phone. It was my sister who lived a block or so away from us.
We were woken by a telephone call from my daughter. She said that we were being evacuated.
I left sooner than them. I had everything ready. They were on the way out the door.
There was not time to think about what you're going to take, what you're not going to take.
The night before the fire, I knew it was a red flag warning and I knew that it was a high risk. So on my way home, I filled up the tank.
On our way out, we didn't get too far from the house and we're watching a fire coming down the hill.
There was a machine shop right to my right, right there. And it had gas tanks and propane tanks. And I saw a lone ember kind of floating through, dancing through the air. And I watched it as it landed on the machine shop. In the time it took me to get my phone back into hand and to take a picture, it was engulfed in flames. And I knew that within moments, it would start exploding and I would be dead. And just as I moved out of the range of the explosions, they started happening and I prayed for the people behind me.
10 minute drive normally to Chico became almost four hours. So it was a long trip.
We started to hear a pattern. People kept telling us their story of how they escaped the campfire. And they talked about how if it wasn't for my neighbor who came and knocked on my door to tell me there was a fire, I don't know that I would have gotten out alive. If it wasn't for my son who lives next door, picking me up and putting me in their car and driving me out of there, I don't know how I would have survived. And so I started really thinking about this connection between isolation and how connected you are to your community, to your neighbors, to your friends, to your family, and how that can be really helpful in a time of a disaster.
So we were actually the beneficiaries of someone making that plan in advance to have that group of people that they were going to call. And that she saved my life that day. So absolutely having that network really saved lives.
Find your five. The idea is that, you know, find trusted allies that can be there and can be responsive and will check in with you if a disaster were to happen.
So we recommend that you put people in your network that are down the street, that are maybe the next town over. They're outside the county and maybe even outside the state.
The final tier of the Ready, Set, Go is that go piece. And it's simply that, it's go. Evacuation information comes in two types. The first type could be an evacuation warning. This is essentially information that we're going to push out to the public, notifying them of a potential threat in their area where they may have to evacuate their home. An evacuation order is essentially that. We are telling people that it's time to go. There is an imminent threat to life and we do not believe that you have much time to leave the area.
Code Red is an opt-in alerting system that will dial your number. It'll send you a phone call, a text message, and an email notifying you of an emergency. That message is sent from our office, the Office of Emergency Services. It's going to be very targeted to your area and it'll be specific to you.
At 5:13, the phone rang with the Code Red call. And so as I was going up 49, I could look over to the left and see the flames in the canyon.
The next layer is for staff to actually be out driving in the areas with a high-low siren. There's no other reason you'll hear that in an area unless we're putting out that evacuation order. Not a warning, but an order.
My day started routine patrol. Came in and I was notified by dispatch to respond out to the Jones fire. Houses that had evacuation tags made it so we could just pass by. We knew that the residents had already been evacuated. Residences that did not have the tags, we would have to physically go in, knock on the door, look in the windows, make sure there were no occupants inside.
Once you've been evacuated, as you're leaving, put this tag somewhere very clearly identifiable, whether it's a mailbox, a gate, your address marker, so that deputies and officers can quickly identify if your residence has already been evacuated.
I mean, you look out my back window here on the east side and you see how close this fire came. It was certainly a shock. And at the same time, it was such an incredible relief to have the house as safe as it was.
I mean, I think with personal preparedness and being ready, it can feel overwhelming. It can feel like a lot to do. And the most important piece is to just start with one little bite at a time.
Just start the conversation. Have some sort of plan. It can be as small as a meetup place. You know, a destination that everybody will get to, everybody in the household will get to if there's a disaster.
Recognize you live in a community, in a county, that really does take the emergency response as a priority. We have worked diligently throughout the last few years on ensuring that not only our staff are trained and prepared, but we're also putting that out for our community. The more prepared you are in your own community, the better the outcome is going to be.
The level of community awareness, they have to be part of the solution. They have to communicate with their neighbors. They have to be part of the discussion in communities. They have to support the response, the prevention, the education, and ultimately the collaboration and the engagement. People have to be engaged at all levels.
The more you think about it now, the easier it will be when the time comes that you need to evacuate.
We've created this network and we want you to make sure that you know that you can tap into that. So if you are feeling a little bit overwhelmed, not sure where to start, reach out to one of our offices, reach out to the Fire Safe Council or 2-1-1. We're here to support you.
One who is ready. One who makes sure their friends and family are set. And has the power to go at a moment's notice. This fire season, you're the hero. We are Ready Nevada County.
Nevada County has a new tool to make evacuations safer and more efficient in the event of an emergency. This new tool is called Zone Haven and we need you to know your zone. This new tool is called Zone Haven and we need you to know your zone. In order to know your zone, you need to go to community.zonehaven.com, type in your address. Once your address populates in the pop-up window, take that information and write down the zone that is given to you where you know you'll find it in case of emergency.
Zone Haven and Knowing Your Zone does not replace NICSOL and/or Code Red. It actually supplements them and it makes those tools more powerful because you will know what zones are being evacuated or which ones are being placed on advisory. And as a result, you won't have to do anything else other than listen to those messages and know if it's time to go.
Even if you don't have internet, this could be done by word of mouth. It can be done by radio or it could be us driving down the street. So please know your zone.
From Truckee to Lake of the Pines, from Chicago Park to Spenceville. Every single square mile of Nevada County has a zone. And having a zone that you know for your neighborhood is going to help you save time to be able to evacuate and keep you and your family safe.
Ready Nevada County is an education campaign designed to help the public have successful outcomes during emergency events. We really focus on a whole host of disasters or emergency events. We want to have a broad spectrum. We want to be prepared for anything. But really, we focus a lot on wildfire because we know that's one of the most likely events to happen in Nevada County.
Ready, Set, Go is really built around the wildfire premise to prepare residents to be ready before an event, to move into the set posture when there's a red flag or a fire is near you, and then to go when it's time to go.
Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a three-tiered community emergency preparedness plan.
I have lived in this house, which we built, my husband and I, 26 years ago now, actually. We selected the hardy plank, the concrete siding, and also the metal roof. Then when we moved up here and heard about the 49er fire, that's when we started to say, wow, this really is even more important than we first realized.
So the 49er fire is one of the most historic fires in Nevada County's history. They figured it changed the laws of the state of California that said, this is how you have to protect your home. That came out of Nevada County.
Steve Eubanks came from the Fire Safe Council. And the main thing we needed to pay attention to was the ladder fuelers. Planting has been removed from the edges of the house so that it does not touch the house. It was an incredible service from the Fire Safe Council to come out and spend a couple of hours going through this property.
So the ready phase is when there's no immediate threat to you and your family. This is the time where you should be doing education and planning, whether that be training, educating yourself, or accumulating equipment, hardening your home, creating defensible space.
Defensible space is really all about creating a buffer zone between your house and flammable vegetation. We really focus on defensible space around the home, that first 100 feet, but also around the roadway, too. Another aspect of the ready phase is hardening the home. And really what that means is making your home more resilient to wildfire.
That's going to be putting the fine-grained mesh around the vents of your home so that embers won't get into under your house or into the eaves of your house. That's going to be using non-combustible materials on your deck and around your home. So when an ember storm comes through, it's not going to ignite your home itself.
I currently live here in Grass Valley with my parents. All of us have sleep apnea. So we all have CPAP machines that require power in order to run.
I also use a nebulizer. And that's used to disperse medication that I need to get myself breathing again. When we have safety shut-offs, we have to hook up our equipment to batteries that have inverters.
We have a generator that powers some of the things around the house. But then I obtained a pretty substantial battery from Freed. And it was so easy to go through the process to obtain a battery that I would recommend it to anyone who might have medical needs that require power or really anything. I would highly recommend contacting Freed.
So whether it's a snowstorm or a public safety power shut-off, we really want folks to be thinking about, okay, what are the things I'll need on hand to weather the storm? Do I need to have candles? Do I need to have battery-powered radio? Do I need to have flashlights? So what are the things that you'll need to shelter in place or address the disaster at hand?
So a go-bag could be anything. It could be a backpack. It could be a suitcase. It's going to be something that you put together to sustain yourself, your family, your pets if needed. That's going to have food, water, medication, clothing, toiletries to get you by for 72 hours. You need to think of your go-bag as the only resource you may have. Stores may be closed. The power may be out. So you may have to literally live out of this thing for a three-day period as an evacuating.
If you are someone with a disability, maybe you have a chronic health condition. For me, I have type 1 diabetes. I have an insulin pump, right? And so that's a critical piece that I need to plan for if I'm going to ever evacuate or be away from my house, frankly, for any amount of time, right? What we find often is that if people don't evacuate with their CPAP machine, with their oxygen concentrator, with their wheelchair, walker, then it can be difficult on the other end.
My name's Ulysses Palencia. I work in the 211 Call Center. I'm just a resident of Grass Valley. I have two daughters, a four-year-old and a one-year-old. In Nevada County, 211 is available 24/7. So what we provide for the community is information. That can be anything from directions to the resource centers. It can be letting them know where the fire is, you know, if they are themselves in an evacuation center, if it's a fire. If there's any information as to whether their power's coming back on during a PSPS. 211 gets the information that we provide directly from the county, so directly from the Office of Emergency Services. The whole team cares. We're all local community members. We all just want to help.
So we were all sleeping in bed on Thursday, November 8th, in paradise. And first, the house phone rang. Picked up my phone. It was my sister who lived a block or so away from us.
We were woken by a telephone call from my daughter. She said that we were being evacuated.
I left sooner than them. I had everything ready. They were on the way out the door.
There was not time to think about what you're going to take, what you're not going to take.
The night before the fire, I knew it was a red flag warning and I knew that it was a high risk. So on my way home, I filled up the tank.
On our way out, we didn't get too far from the house and we're watching a fire coming down the hill.
There was a machine shop right to my right, right there. And it had gas tanks and propane tanks. And I saw a lone ember kind of floating through, dancing through the air. And I watched it as it landed on the machine shop. In the time it took me to get my phone back into hand and to take a picture, it was engulfed in flames. And I knew that within moments, it would start exploding and I would be dead. And just as I moved out of the range of the explosions, they started happening and I prayed for the people behind me.
10-minute drive normally to Chico became almost four hours. So it was a long trip.
We started to hear a pattern. People kept telling us their story of how they escaped the campfire. And they talked about how if it wasn't for my neighbor who came and knocked on my door to tell me there was a fire, I don't know that I would have gotten out alive. If it wasn't for my son who lives next door, picking me up and putting me in their car and driving me out of there, I don't know how I would have survived. And so I started really thinking about this connection between isolation and how connected you are to your community, to your neighbors, to your friends, to your family, and how that can be really helpful in a time of a disaster.
So we were actually the beneficiaries of someone making that plan in advance to have that group of people that they were going to call. And she saved my life that day. So absolutely, having that network really saved lives.
Find your five. The idea is that, you know, find trusted allies that can be there and can be responsive and will check in with you if a disaster were to happen.
So we recommend that you put people in your network that are down the street, that are maybe the next town over, that are outside the county and maybe even outside the state.
The final tier of the Ready, Set, Go is that "go" piece. And it's simply that. It's "go." Evacuation information comes in two types. The first type could be an evacuation warning. This is essentially information that we're going to push out to the public, notifying them of a potential threat in their area where they may have to evacuate their home. An evacuation order is essentially that. We are telling people that it's time to go. There is an imminent threat to life and we do not believe that you have much time to leave the area.
Code Red is an opt-in alerting system that will dial your number. It'll send you a phone call, a text message, and an email notifying you of an emergency. That message is sent from our office, the Office of Emergency Services. It's going to be very targeted to your area and it'll be specific to you.
At 5:13, the phone rang with the Code Red call. And so as I was going up 49, I could look over to the left and see the flames in the canyon.
The next layer is for staff to actually be out driving in the areas with a high-low siren. There's no other reason you'll hear that in an area unless we're putting out that evacuation order. Not a warning, but an order.
My day started routine patrol. Came in and I was notified by dispatch to respond out to the Jones Fire. Houses that had evacuation tags made it so we could just pass by. We knew that the residents had already been evacuated. Residences that did not have the tags, we would have to physically go in, knock on the door, look in the windows, make sure there were no occupants inside.
Once you've been evacuated, as you're leaving, put this tag somewhere very clearly identifiable, whether it's a mailbox, a gate, your address marker, so that deputies and officers can quickly identify if your residence has already been evacuated.
You look out my back window here on the east side and you see how close this fire came. It was certainly a shock. And at the same time, it was such an incredible relief to have the house as safe as it was.
I mean, I think with personal preparedness and being ready, it can feel overwhelming. It can feel like a lot to do. And the most important piece is to just start with one little bite at a time.
Just start the conversation. Have some sort of plan. It can be as small as a meetup place, you know, a destination that everybody will get to, everybody in the household will get to if there's a disaster.
Recognize you live in a community, in a county, that really does take the emergency response as a priority. We have worked diligently throughout the last few years on ensuring that not only our staff are trained and prepared, but we're also putting that out for our community. The more prepared you are in your own community, the better the outcome is going to be.
The level of community awareness, they have to be part of the solution. They have to communicate with their neighbors. They have to be part of the discussion in communities. They have to support the response, the prevention, the education, and ultimately, the collaboration and the engagement. People have to be engaged at all levels.
The more you think about it now, the easier it will be when the time comes that you need to evacuate.
We've created this network and we want you to make sure that you know that you can tap into that. So if you are feeling a little bit overwhelmed, not sure where to start, reach out to one of our offices, reach out to the Fire Safe Council or 211. We're here to support you.
In order to know your zone, you need to go to community.zonehaven.com, type in your address. Once your address populates in the pop-up window, take that information and write down the zone that is given to you where you know you'll find it in case of emergency.
Zone Haven and Knowing Your Zone does not replace NICSOL and/or Code Red. It actually supplements them and it makes those tools more powerful because you will know what zones are being evacuated or which ones are being placed on advisory. And as a result, you won't have to do anything else other than listen to those messages and know if it's time to go.
Even if you don't have internet, this could be done by word of mouth. It can be done by radio or it could be us driving down the street. So please know your zone.
From Truckee to Lake of the Pines, from Chicago Park to Spenceville. Every single square mile of Nevada County has a zone. And having a zone that you know for your neighborhood is going to help you save time to be able to evacuate and keep you and your family safe.
Ready Nevada County is an education campaign designed to help the public have successful outcomes during emergency events. We really focus on a whole host of disasters or emergency events. We want to have a broad spectrum. We want to be prepared for anything. But really, we focus a lot on wildfire because we know that's one of the most likely events to happen in Nevada County.
Ready, Set, Go is really built around the wildfire premise to... to prepare residents to be ready before an event, to move into the set posture when there's a red flag or a fire is near you, and then to go when it's time to go.
Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a three-tiered community emergency preparedness plan.
I have lived in this house, which we built, my husband and I, 26 years ago now, actually. We selected the hardy plank, the concrete siding, and also the metal roof. Then when we moved up here and heard about the 49er fire, that's when we started to say, wow, this really is even more important than we first realized.
So the 49er fire is one of the most historic fires in Nevada County's history. They figured it changed the laws of the state of California that said, this is how you have to protect your home. That came out of Nevada County.
Steve Eubanks came from the Fire Safe Council. And the main thing we needed to pay attention to was the ladder fuels. Planting has been removed from the edges of the house so that it does not touch the house. It was an incredible service from the Fire Safe Council to come out and spend a couple of hours going through this property.
So the ready phase is when there's no immediate threat to you and your family. This is the time where you should be doing education and planning, whether that be training, educating yourself, or accumulating equipment, hardening your home, creating defensible space.
Defensible space is really all about creating a buffer zone between your house and flammable vegetation. We really focus on defensible space around the home, that first 100 feet, but also around the roadway, too. Another aspect of the ready phase is hardening the home. And really what that means is making your home more resilient to wildfire.
That's going to be putting the fine-grained mesh around the vents of your home so that embers won't get into under your house or into the eaves of your house. That's going to be using non-combustible materials on your deck and around your home. So when an ember storm comes through, it's not going to ignite your home itself.
I currently live here in Grass Valley with my parents. All of us have sleep apnea. So we all have CPAP machines that require power in order to run.
I also use a nebulizer. And that's used to disperse medication that I need to give myself breathing again. When we have safety shut-offs, we have to hook up our equipment to batteries that have inverters.
We have a generator that powers some of the things around the house. But then I obtained a pretty substantial battery from Freed. And it was so easy to go through the process to obtain a battery that I would recommend it to anyone who might have medical needs that require power, or really anything. I would highly recommend contacting Freed.
So whether it's a snowstorm or a public safety power shut-off, we really want folks to be thinking about, okay, what are the things I'll need on hand to weather the storm? Do I need to have candles? Do I need to have battery-powered radio? Do I need to have flashlights? So what are the things that you'll need to shelter in place or address the disaster at hand?
So a go-bag could be anything. It could be a backpack. It could be a suitcase. It's going to be something that you put together to sustain yourself, your family, your pets, if needed. That's going to have food, water, medication, clothing, toiletries to get you by for 72 hours. You need to think of your go-bag as the only resource you may have. Stores may be closed. The power may be out. So you may have to literally live out of this thing for a three-day period as an evacuating.
If you are someone with a disability, maybe you have a chronic health condition. For me, I have type 1 diabetes. I have an insulin pump, right? And so that's a critical piece that I need to plan for if I'm going to ever evacuate or be away from my house, frankly, for any amount of time, right? What we find often is that if people don't evacuate with their CPAP machine, with their oxygen concentrator, with their wheelchair, walker, then it can be difficult on the other end.
My name is Ulysses Palencia. I work in the 211 Call Center. I'm just a resident of Grass Valley. I have two daughters, a four-year-old and a one-year-old. In Nevada County, 211 is available 24/7. So what we provide for the community is information. That can be anything from directions to the resource centers. It can be letting them know where the fire is, you know, if they are themselves in an evacuation center, if it's a fire, if there's any information as to whether their power's coming back on during a PSPS. 211 gets the information that we provide directly from the county, so directly from the Office of Emergency Services. The whole team cares. We're all local community members. We all just want to help.
So we were all sleeping in bed on Thursday, November 8th, in paradise. And first, the house phone rang. Picked up my phone. It was my sister who lived a block or so away from us.
We were woken by a telephone call from my daughter. She said that we were being evacuated.
I left sooner than them. I had everything ready. They were on the way out the door.
There was not time to think about what you're going to take, what you're not going to take.
The night before the fire, I knew it was a red flag warning, and I knew that it was a high risk. So on my way home, I filled up the tank.
On our way out, we didn't get too far from the house. And we're watching a fire coming down the hill.
There was a machine shop right to my right, right there. And it had gas tanks and propane tanks. And I saw a lone ember kind of floating through, dancing through the air. And I watched it as it landed on the machine shop. In the time it took me to get my phone back into hand and to take a picture, it was engulfed in flames. And I knew that within moments, it would start exploding, and I would be dead. And just as I moved out of the range of the explosions, they started happening, and I prayed for the people behind me.
10-minute drive normally to Chico became almost four hours. So it was a long trip.
We started to hear a pattern. People kept telling us their story of how they escaped the campfire. And they talked about how if it wasn't for my neighbor who came and knocked on my door to tell me there was a fire, I don't know that I would have gotten out alive. If it wasn't for my son, who lives next door, picking me up and putting me in their car and driving me out of there, I don't know how I would have survived. And so I started really thinking about this connection between isolation and how connected you are to your community, to your neighbors, to your friends, to your family, and how that can be really helpful in a time of a disaster.
So we were actually the beneficiaries of someone making that plan in advance to have that group of people that they were going to call. And that she saved my life that day. So absolutely having that network really saved lives.
Find your five. The idea is that, you know, find trusted allies that can be there and can be responsive and will check in with you if a disaster were to happen.
So we recommend that you put people in your network that are down the street, that are maybe the next town over, that are outside the county and maybe even outside the state.
The final tier of the ready, set, go is that go piece. And it's simply that, it's go. Evacuation information comes in two types. The first type could be an evacuation warning. This is essentially information that we're going to push out to the public, notifying them of a potential threat in their area where they may have to evacuate their home. An evacuation order is essentially that. We are telling people that it's time to go. There is an imminent threat to life, and we do not believe that you have much time to leave the area.
Code Red is an opt-in alerting system that will dial your number. It'll send you a phone call, a text message, and an email notifying you of an emergency. That message is sent from our office, the Office of Emergency Services. It's going to be very targeted to your area, and it'll be specific to you.
At 5:13, the phone rang with the Code Red call. And so as I was going up 49, I could look over to the left and see the flames in the canyon.
The next layer is for staff to actually be out driving in the areas with a high-low siren. There's no other reason you'll hear that in an area unless we're putting out that evacuation order. Not a warning, but an order.
My day started routine patrol. Came in and I was notified by dispatch to respond out to the Jones fire. Houses that had evacuation tags made it so we could just pass by. We knew that the residents had already been evacuated. Residences that did not have the tags, we would have to physically go in, knock on the door, look in the windows, make sure there were no occupants inside.
Once you've been evacuated, as you're leaving, put this tag somewhere very clearly identifiable, whether it's a mailbox, a gate, your address marker, so that deputies and officers can quickly identify if your residence has already been evacuated.
You look out my back window here on the east side, and you see how close this fire came. It was certainly a shock. And at the same time, it was such an incredible relief to have the house as safe as it was.
I mean, I think with personal preparedness and being ready, it can feel overwhelming. It can feel like a lot to do. And the most important piece is to just start with one little bite at a time.
Just start the conversation. Have some sort of plan. It can be as small as a meetup place, you know, a destination that everybody will get to, everybody in the household will get to if there's a disaster.
Recognize you live in a community in a county that really does take the emergency response as a priority. We have worked diligently throughout the last few years on ensuring that not only our staff are trained and prepared, but we're also putting that out for our community. The more prepared you are in your own community, the better the outcome is going to be.
The level of community awareness, they have to be part of the solution. They have to communicate with their neighbors. They have to be part of the discussion in communities. They have to support the response, the prevention, the education, and ultimately, the collaboration and the engagement. People have to be engaged at all levels.
The more you think about it now, the easier it will be when the time comes that you need to evacuate.
We've created this network, and we want you to make sure that you know that you can tap into that. So if you are feeling a little bit overwhelmed, not sure where to start, reach out to one of our offices, reach out to the Fire Safe Council or 211. We're here to support you.
From the foothills of the Sierra Nevada, a new hero will emerge. One who is ready. One who makes sure their friends and family are set. And has the power to go at a moment's notice. This fire season, you're the hero. We are Ready Nevada County.
Nevada County has a new tool to make evacuations safer and more efficient in the event of an emergency. This new tool is called Zone Haven, and we need you to know your zone. In order to know your zone, you need to go to community.zonehaven.com, type in your address. Once your address populates in the pop-up window, take that information and write down the zone that is given to you where you know you'll find it in case of emergency.
Zone Haven and knowing your zone does not replace NICSOL and/or Code Red. It actually supplements them, and it makes those tools more powerful because you will know what zones are being evacuated or which ones are being placed on advisory. And as a result, you won't have to do anything else other than listen to those messages and know if it's time to go.
Even if you don't have internet, this could be done by word of mouth. It can be done by radio, or it could be us driving down the street. So please know your zone.
From Truckee to Lake of the Pines, from Chicago Park to Spenceville, every single square mile of Nevada County has a zone. And having a zone that you know for your neighborhood is going to help you save time to be able to evacuate and keep you and your family safe.
Ready Nevada County is an education campaign designed to help the public have successful outcomes during emergency events. We really focus on a whole host of disasters or emergency events. We want to have a broad spectrum. We want to be prepared for anything. But really, we focus a lot on wildfire because we know that's one of the most likely events to happen in Nevada County.
Ready, Set, Go is really built around the wildfire premise to prepare residents to be ready before an event, to move into the set posture when there's a red flag or a fire is near you, and then to go when it's time to go.
Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a three-tiered community emergency preparedness plan.
I have lived in this house, which we built, my husband and I, 26 years ago now, actually. We selected the hardy plank, the concrete siding, and also the metal roof. Then when we moved up here and heard about the 49er fire, that's when we started to say, wow, this really is even more important than we first realized.
So the 49er fire is one of the most historic fires in Nevada County's history. They figured it changed the laws of the state of California that said, this is how you have to protect your home. That came out of Nevada County.
Steve Eubanks came from the Fire Safe Council. And the main thing we needed to pay attention to was the ladder fuels. Planting has been removed from the edges of the house so that it does not touch the house. It was an incredible service from the Fire Safe Council to come out and spend a couple of hours going through this property.
So the ready phase is when there's no immediate threat to you and your family. This is the time where you should be doing education and planning, whether that be training, educating yourself, or accumulating equipment, hardening your home, creating defensible space.
Defensible space is really all about creating a buffer zone between your house and flammable vegetation. We really focus on defensible space around the home, that first 100 feet, but also around the roadway, too. We really focus on defensible space around the home, that first 100 feet, but also around the roadway too. Another aspect of the ready phase is hardening the home. And really what that means is making your home more resilient to wildfire.
That's going to be putting the fine-grained mesh around the vents of your home so that embers won't get into under your house or into the eaves of your house. That's going to be using non-combustible materials on your deck and around your home. So when an ember storm comes through, it's not going to ignite your home itself.
I currently live here in Grass Valley with my parents. All of us have sleep apnea. So we all have CPAP machines that require power in order to run.
I also use a nebulizer. And that's used to disperse medication that I need to get myself breathing again. When we have safety shut-offs, we have to hook up our equipment to batteries that have inverters.
We have a generator that powers some of the things around the house. But then I obtained a pretty substantial battery from Freed. And it was so easy to go through the process to obtain a battery that I would recommend it to anyone who might have medical needs that require power or really anything. I would highly recommend contacting Freed. So whether it's a snowstorm or a public safety power shut-off, we really want folks to be thinking about, okay, what are the things I'll need on hand to weather the storm? Do I need to have candles? Do I need to have battery-powered radio? Do I need to have flashlights? So what are the things that you'll need to shelter in place or address the disaster at hand?
So a go-bag could be anything. It could be a backpack. It could be a suitcase. It's going to be something that you put together to sustain yourself, your family, your pets if needed. That's going to have food, water, medication, clothing, toiletries to get you by for 72 hours. You need to think of your go-bag as the only resource you may have. Stores may be closed, the power may be out. So you may have to literally live out of this thing for a three-day period as an evacuee.
If you are someone with a disability, maybe you have a chronic health condition. For me, I have type 1 diabetes. I have an insulin pump, right? And so that's a critical piece that I need to plan for if I'm going to ever evacuate or be away from my house, frankly, for any amount of time, right? What we find often is that if people don't evacuate with their CPAP machine, with their oxygen concentrator, with their wheelchair, walker, then it can be difficult on the other end.
My name's Ulysses Palencia. I work in the 211 call center. I'm just a resident.